Ready? I'd like to call a meeting to order. Uh, the meeting has been noticed. Evans Print Media Group, WCOW Radio, Magnum Radio, Pro Tribune, Sparta City Hall, and Sparta Free Library. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Um, I'd like to recommend only item three C, uh, the ISA ban for consideration tonight.
Three C, the ban, pull that out. All right, any other changes?
Um, I would like to move to business three F and G to table those to the workshop model and provide opportunities for the board to have a first reading prior to August 1st. Um, my reasoning is that these policies have far reaching implications, are serious in nature, and complex to the point that the board and all of the community has a right and obligation to weigh in on them. A workshop setting the license and the workshop with and could be trying to allow a lot of the board to get some support.
Okay. That's a motion.
I need to table three F and G to a workshop model. Whatever color these are, that's the wordings should be.
If we move, if we do table it and we do go to a workshop model, we would most likely, I would envision following, uh, a workshop, a first reading, and then a final. For example, uh, I'm gonna throw out some dates. Hypothetically, we would do a workshop on the fifteenth, which is Monday, the fifteenth. We would have a special committee of the whole meeting, uh, on the twenty-second, where that would have been recommendations. And then we would have a, uh, special full meeting on the twenty-ninth to approve the, the policies if that's what it would be. That's how I would envision that workshop model to go. Uh, in that way, we'd still have two readings from the board. If the board wanted to, uh, we could still have the workshop in between on the fifteenth, and we could still have some discussion tonight as well if that being an option coming out of that. If, if the board decides to table that, it would be my recommendation to do a workshop at one point, committee, uh, special committee meeting at one point, and then a special board meeting. Or three reads, a workshop, committee, and a full board.
How many readings have we had right now?
This will be the first reading.
We got it a couple weeks ago, right?
Yep.
Anything to add before we vote, or?
I just wanna, so Anthony Sholty, I just wanna say, I, you know, I guess I'm a little curious to hear what Mr. McKenna and Mr. Russ were thinking about, given it's on the agenda. And I don't necessarily wanna take that opportunity for them to speak up. Hopefully, Mr. McKenna will be here by then. I don't have a problem still passing on it at that point. Um, but I guess I'd be interested to hear what Mr. McKenna and Mr. Russ had to say during those items. And that's my thing.
Yeah, there's nothing against, we can, as an agenda, but if we smothered to the print item, so that.
We could table it at the time when it comes up as well.
I think, yeah, we can do that as well.
As an option.
And I'm not saying, I don't have a problem tableing it. I, I just am really interested to hear what Mr. McKenna and Mr. Russ have to say during that.
We talked about it, uh, this morning, and I don't want to speak for Mr. McKenna, but I came out of that thinking that, um, we were gonna have discussion tonight, and if we wanted to have a workshop model in between, that would be okay, and then we would have a full read that day. Uh, it's out of order. We've got the, the committee, workshop, and full board, but at least we followed those steps, which is the nod of that. That's what we did this morning.
My concerns, like, I have a couple of concerns with that. Um, the first one is that, um, we have a full agenda tonight, and I have a lot of comments and questions, not, I'm taking this pick, but genuine questions I have, um, to ask. And, um, so that's one. And then, two, if we were to, to approve whatever we talked through tonight, and then we have a workshop, changes made there would not defend the changes approved by the board that we're in. So I think it should make so much more sense to have a conversation. I know that there are people that are curious and interested in this, who want to know more information about the process and what these changes mean and what they are, um, but I think we should have the workshop and then do it in the right order. Have the workshop, come to a consensus there, have a second reading, have a committee of the whole, and then get that.
That's what I'd recommend.
And then, and then have a special, um, regular meeting, or whatever, then the third meeting, or whatever, just have a.
So the workshop would be more community education at that stage, right? I, I just, I thought these were very technical federal changes, but we didn't have a whole lot of literature on what we changed, right? So that's where.
Are we supposed to have the second before we do the discussion?
Oh, I, I just thought about that. I think we can have discussion at any time, but making a decision at some point.
But if, if you're calling, if you wanna call a motion.
Yeah.
You can do, if you wanted to, you can call a question.
I'm okay with discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anything else there?
Um, no, I just think we should do it, and I think we should, that we should go through those conflicts. Um, this is not just, um, a change, well, one of them is a change in our policy, but one of them is an involved addition to our policy book, um, involving harassment and discrimination. So I think it's something that we need to discuss with the community in a workshop model, just happen, but from everybody, just like we have previously, and then have approval by the committee and then approval by the board, get that.
Yeah. Mr. Burns, go by, take a bullet. I, I would like to, to have a better understanding of what we mean by a workshop model. My concern is, obviously, this could be a charged discussion, and, uh, people who have very strong opinions, uh, when it comes to this issue. My concern is that we could have three or four people come, who are not elected board members, suggest changes to the policy, uh, that then come to the board. Are we bound in the workshop model to take a vote if those are pending, make changes, or are we bound to attend with in the workshop model? I'm just not sure what, what workshop model means.
In the past, we've taken input. Uh, we have made some, some tweaks to indicate what the recommendations from the committees are, or from the workshop is, um, but.
When you said we take the tweaks that are recommended by those to attend.
So there's a committee, uh?
Yeah.
A committee recommendation from the board workshop?
Yeah.
We don't, we don't have to take it, we've never had to take it, but that's how we always worded it, was, there's a recommendation coming out of the workshop, this is what it is, the board makes the final decision as to whether we're gonna accept that.
There's some talking points, you know, some, the way I read it, there's some non-negotiables in there, and there might be some, um, some negotiables about how we handle the grievance procedure, for example, option one, or option two, or option three, or option four. So those, I guess, are, in my opinion, are more of the talking points, because the rest is just flat out from, uh, Mr. Burns Gilbert, that new law that's coming into effect August 1st. And I just want to, whatever we do, it is my recommendation that the board has this in place prior to August 1st.
Mr. Ross, if it, um, if it's not workable, if it's a, if it's a recommendation, um, then I think we can, I think we can.
It expands, it expands. Yep, and there's a couple, there's a slide in here tonight that highlights some of those changes of expanding the definition of, of sexual harassment, sexual discrimination, and so on.
Further discussion? Otherwise, I don't think we have a second right now to remove three, you said there's three F and G. Second, actually. Uh, Ms. Berens, uh, any further discussion? Otherwise, we can go to a vote. Uh, would that be roll call, or all in favor?
I would do roll call. I would do, if, if you're okay with, I'd still like to pull three C. We could do that as a.
Separate?
Separate. We've never really done that, but this is kind of the first time we've had, you know, this kind of discussion around the table about what you're doing. So I guess, um, if everyone's okay with three C being on, along with, um, Miss, Ropess has a motion, and second by, Darren, are you okay with three C being in there as well? And then, if that does pass, all three of them are, are gone. If it doesn't pass, we can take another vote with three C being on. Is that okay?
Say that one more time, you want us to vote?
So, I think the first motion, since we have a motion, and second, is to, uh, basically pull three C and table three F and G in favor of the workshop model first.
Yeah.
That would say we're having a workshop. And if that fails, then we would make a new motion for three C.
Right.
Just three C.
Okay.
Is that okay?
That's helpful.
Everybody understood, right? So, Robert's rules? Pretty cool. Not the agenda, I would, I, if it would not, if it would not pass, you could once again ask to table three F. You could ask again at that time. If we move it now, we don't talk about it, there's no discussion. Yes. Correct. Okay.
So how about, um, we need to table to the workshop model, the possible recommendations to approve upon, but we have, is there a question to decide, so we can get it out there, take a look at it, but then possibly recommend to approve that policy after a workshop.
So you're, you are, if I understand, if I understand, you're removing the word "and possible recommendations" to just say discussion, um, not, discussion only, uh, on F and G. No, no voting, no anything, it's just, it's clearly solely discussion, uh, on policy revision of twenty-two sixty-six, and discussion on policy twenty-two sixty-four. No action item at all, no recommendation.
But, but have that later in the, in the workshop model. Like, obviously, we have to assess, but we have to go through this, but do it.
So I guess, I guess, are you asking to attach, we're having a workshop?
Yes.
So that's attached. That's attached.
I, I feel attached.
So the updated amendment to the motion would be, I want to, uh, for three F and G, remove possible recommendation to approve, uh, and just focus on discussion for three F and three G tonight.
And table that to.
Post-workshop.
With a workshop, with a, with a, with a future workshop on those two, on twenty-two sixty-six and twenty-two sixty-four.
All right. Good. Any further questions?
Are you okay with that as well?
Yeah. All right, uh, roll call, we said, right?
Yep. No.
Ropess? Yes. Mr. Ross? Span?
No.
Mr. Hendricks?
No. Uh, motion fails to hold.
Mr. Prinssen? I'd make a motion for three C, discussion of possible recommendation to approve the purchase of the F for ISA.
Motion for Mr. Sholty. Second for Mr. Hendricks. Uh, so that was the motion to adopt, pulling three C without three F and three G included. Any further discussion? Uh, should, should we do a roll call vote on that? Just to be consistent there?
Yep.
Please, Ms. Margaret.
Mr. Ross? Mr. Sholty?
Yes.
Span? Mr. Sholty?
Yep.
Hendricks?
Yes. Well, we have an agenda. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in the name of the republic, which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice overall. Right. Mr. Russ, you remind us of Sparta's mission statement.
Yeah, our mission statement is to educate all students academically, emotionally, and socially, to inspire curiosity and resilience.
So any public input today?
I do not believe we have any public input tonight.
Public input? So moving right along then, is Darren all ready to go?
I believe so.
Perfect. School perception, staff, student, family survey report.
All right. Uh, this is Darren from School Perceptions. I'm sorry. Good evening, Darren. Thanks for, for hanging on with us, uh, and being available tonight. I know you're at a different district, so we really appreciate you taking the time tonight.
My pleasure. My pleasure.
So, uh, we're here tonight to go through a, a brief overview of our student, staff, and parent survey results, uh, at a very high level. Uh, I can tell you this is District Y. The building administrators have their specific results, and we're working through the process on how to implement, uh, action plans, root cause analysis, communication, and everything like that. So now we're in that, that stage as well. Uh, I do have a meeting with a, a consultant at CISA Six, um, the CEO of CISA Six, to possibly help us guide us through that process, not a lengthy process, but one or two meetings to get us off on the right foot. Uh, he's got a lot of experience with that. So, uh, without further ado, Darren, I'm going to turn it over to you, and you're gonna share the screen, and we'll go from there.
Sounds good. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thanks for having me. I'd like to thank you also in advance for, uh, allowing Sam to present with us later on the week at the school board convention. I'm very, very excited, because he's so enthusiastic about this process, and using our survey tools to improve the programming for the staff, students, and parents of the Sparta Area School District. So, um, he's, he's gonna be a joy to have, a joy to, to spread the word about this opportunity. So, we're gonna start with the staff survey report tonight. Um, you know our company, so that'll be very brief, and then we're gonna get right into the respondent information, any results, and analysis for the, from the staff. Again, um, we're familiar with each other, we've been doing this since two thousand and two.
I'm sorry, Darren, we can only see a, a little bit of your screen. It's where it was before. It's not toned in on the, uh, survey.
Okay, um, it's not advancing?
No, we have a very small.
Okay, let me, uh, stop sharing here then, bear with me. Screen shift, see, what do I have here?
Hey, is that box in the upper middle there, there?
Okay, um. Got it, got it, yeah, no, here we are. How's that?
Uh, you just need to share it now.
There you go. You're okay, um. I apologize, um. Okay.
There we go.
Is that it?
Perfect, we got staff.
Okay, thank you. My apologies. All right, so staff survey. Again, we've done over ten thousand of these now, uh, for staff, parents, students, and community. Is that slide showing up with the graphics?
Yes.
The bullet sign?
Yes.
All right, we conducted the survey in May with the deadline of May twentieth. We had three hundred and thirty respondents, for, in a participation rate of sixty-six percent. Our company average on a survey like this for staff is sixty-five to seventy percent, to right where many districts that we survey are. This is completely confidential, and we typically find in year two, this is your baseline year, we call it, where we establish kind of a baseline of results, and then use targeted improvement to, to address areas that maybe are lower than you'd like to see, but also protect the areas that are, aren't coming out as strength. So we typically see an improvement in response rate in year two, um, as comfort level with this process grows. At which location do you spend the most time? This is your distribution of employees and where they work. And then we can also give you a report that tells you the percentage of respondents by position. Uh, classroom teachers came in at forty-five percent. Twelve percent of the respondents were educational specialists, maybe counselors, green specialists, folks like that. Seventeen percent, parent professionals, support staff administration, so on. And we can look at results specific to a job category. That was something that really helped me in Slinger, because I found out some good feedback from our parent professionals when I did the survey back in twenty-twenty. We have a distribution of years of experience, on how many years that you worked for the district, uh, which is sometimes quite revealing for the districts. You have a nice balanced distribution between veterans and new, new employees and in-between. We have indexes. Every question feeds one of five areas. And the five areas are, do the ISA employees, the academics being provided, engagement, do they like working at the school, because they feel valued, heard, contribute, and can contribute? Do they feel supported? How was the student experience through the ISA staff? And how was the staff experience through their own? And so on a scale of one to five, we ask them to rate their experience. Strongly agree, it's what we're shooting for a five. Or disagree, we do not offer a three. If they don't know, or are unsure, they can click that box, but we don't score it, because they don't really have an opinion about that question. They disagree, it's a two, and they strongly disagree, it's a one. So we're shooting for anything above the true median, which is a three or higher. Ideally, we'd love to get in the fours, moving towards the perfect world of everything being a box. So this is where your indexes are, this is just kind of a snapshot of your results. But what's more helpful is going item by item. So I'm gonna show you how we're gonna report these findings, and then this'll be how we report the findings on all three of the PowerPoints tonight. So on the next slide, these are the questions about their workday. So on each question, as I reported tonight, I'm gonna tell you the question, the percentage of employees that gave you a four or a five. That's the first column. The second column is the average, all respondents averaged together, all the ones and twos, the fours and fives. And then the final column is the average score amongst all the other districts that have asked this question. So it'll give you some context for how your score is compared to other districts. And then I'll give you a summary at the end on the top five, the five where, uh, you scored the strongest, and then the five where there's a big gap between your results and the comparison district, of which, we've asked this with thousands of districts, hundreds, and there's hundreds in your comparison pool, um, once we, we sort it by staff to student ratio, socioeconomic condition, we, we have a lot of these questions with eighty to ninety comparison districts, um, because we don't want to compare you to our Pelton, Arizona, or Virginia, very different circumstances. We have a border town in Arizona we serve, thirty-nine percent of their students are immigrant children crossing the border, that's not the same, um, population as Sparta's dealing with in Sparta, Wisconsin. So we want to compare your results to other districts that are similar to Sparta. So if that scoring of report process makes sense, we'll just go question by question here on how your results look. So most days I look forward to going to work. And we're gonna report them to you by your highest scoring to your lowest for each section. I feel comfortable sharing input and concerns with my supervisor, administrator. I feel supported by my supervisor administrator when I make a decision. Other workday question, the amount of work I'm asked to do is reasonable, manageable. District seeks input from a broad group of staff members. Notice here, your scoring higher than the comparison group. Important information to my work is shared with me in a timely and effective manner. And then we get into a couple of areas that scored lower than we, than we'd like to see that Sam and I have talked about. Our staff handles student discipline in a consistent manner. And our, our school's discipline, disciplinary practices and policies are effective. You see the lower percentage of agreement, the lower average score, and that there's quite a gap between Sparta and, and the comparison district's average score. So then, what about the teaching environment? I feel safe at work, above four. I have opportunities for training, professional development, improve my work. All students at our school are respected for their values and beliefs. School board is doing what it takes to make our district successful. I have training and support to work with students with different backgrounds. District administration is doing what it takes to make our district successful. Is the district heading the right direction? I'm recognized when I do a good job. And then in the last year, I received useful feedback to help with your performance. Those formal and informal job evaluations. And then finally, the support question. I have healthy working relationships with my coworkers. Score very high. I have the technology I need to do my job well. And, very closely, I have access to the technology support I need. Nice to see those linked together, see, as far as having a match between having the tools and having the support to run those two. Our school supports students from diverse backgrounds. Our school has a process to ensure every student has a connection with at least one adult in school. I have the materials and supplies I need to do my job well. All students in school are given equal opportunity to learn, experience, and success. Staff input is valued. Now again, here's the interesting, that's why it's helpful to have a comparison score. The district's pay practices are fair. You may see fifty-four percent and a three-point-oh-one and say, oh my, well, it's right at the comparison average. That's where that comparison column is helpful, kind of puts context into how you compare to other districts. But, on the other hand, then, when you talk about our parents and community support the school district, look at the sizable gap. Give the eye to the staff between how they scored, uh, things locally compared to other districts that have asked similar questions. Point seven-two difference. And then the social and emotional needs of all students are being met. When we asked the question earlier about our schools have equitable opportunities, we do break that out, just to see if there's any difference by, by population subcategory, whether it's different cultural background, gender, students with special needs, different racial background, and then different socioeconomic backgrounds, which I know Sparta has very diverse socioeconomic populations. So we're gonna do this for all three reports, top five scores, and these are where you scored at or above or close to the comparison average. So compared to other districts, um, you're doing, uh, very comparable work in these areas. Getting input, your pay practices, which I know has been an area of, of concerted efforts locally, as I said through your other board meetings as well. Having a process to ensure kids are connected with an adult. School board, uh, scored favorably compared to other districts as well, and they look forward to going to work in a similar level to other districts. These are worth protecting and maintaining, because they're going the right direction. However, where there's a significant gap, and is worthy of more study, which, uh, Sam and his leadership team are doing, and seeking that outside respect from CISA Six, is feeling supported by my supervisor administrator, gap is a bit wide there. All students in our school respected for their values and beliefs. All students in our school respected for their values and beliefs. Equal opportunities to learn and experience success for students. Having the feedback they receive being useful. And our parents and community supporting the school district through the eyes of the staff. Now, on a scale of zero to ten, how likely would you be to recommend a district that has a place for employment? We do allow a neutral score, a middle score. And you'll see, this is why we don't have those other ratings because human nature is, oh, when and now, they'll score you right in the middle. And that's not quite as helpful. But on this scale, we do, on a scale of zero to ten, your score came in an average of six point one. The average score for the other districts where we've asked this question is a seven point zero six. So are there any questions related to the staff survey report?
Yeah, so Darren, I'm wondering, so I'm looking back at the workday slide, the second one. It says our staff handles student discipline in a consistent manner. We got thirty-seven percent on that. I'm sorry, yeah, right there. So two point five-five compared to the comparison average of three point zero four. And then the next one as well, the discipline practices, thirty-two percent. Is that not in our bottom five just because of the ratio? Is that what?
Yeah, it's the ratio, but by all means, that's why when you do a top five, bottom five, maybe the ratio didn't put it there, but that's why we show you the full report. Not my position to determine where the work should be done, but if you're going to look at a bottom five, when you go to that slide, there's some gaps here that are, that you could argue. Honestly, that probably should be in the five, and that's an area you can control more than things like that parent and community piece, where it's point seven-two.
Well, in my thought, oh, I'm sorry.
No, and so I think that's where administration has to go through this full report and say, where can we make our impact? And improve the school environment? And quite honestly, what I really thought of in Sparta is that you did all three surveys because you look for triangulation. Oftentimes, I'm not a consultant like Ted who you're going to talk to, but I always have my superintendent head on. That's why I love working for this company is I can work with boards and superintendents. My first order of business would be to look at are there areas in all three surveys when we look at the next reports where we can do a three for? Maybe parents, we'll see what the report says, what your parent feedback on behaviors. Maybe that's one of the places you start.
Well, again, I think my thought process with the whole, with the survey and what those results were showing was while we're always trying to bridge that gap with our community and our school district, right? Parents, community, and the school district. But I gotta say, I feel like if we could find a way to rail in the discipline aspect, because it's something clearly that affects our staff, we'd see a number of these increase.
Yes, couldn't agree more. In fact, if you're okay with it, that's a nice segue to see what the parents are saying to the kids.
Sounds great. We'll just stay on the staff one. Any other ones for staff?
You bet, by all means.
But that's the sort of informative question that we're asking ourselves at the building level.
Um, I'm very curious if on the side that states what best describes your position, nine percent of our staff chose not to work for. How does that compare to other districts?
Yeah. Yeah, very good question. It's a little higher than we typically see. And I would tell you that there could be any number of reasons, but one may be that we hear an awful lot is distrust that it's truly confidential. And this first year, they might have been a little cautious about identifying themselves. Now, what I'll tell you as a board, we take confidentiality so seriously. I don't have the means as your project manager to know who said what. The only one that could search that would be our head programmer, who could go deep into the program and look for that. So I think the only way to have that get better is over time, have it, staff take it, just see meaningful change based on the data and not have anything come back to them. Because we do allow for free form comments. And I have provided Sam comment reports with the top theme. And sometimes staff are just a little reluctant to take the survey. That's why you're around at sixty-six percent or identify themselves. We also have a safeguard in there because I've provided a report to Sam and the principals, building by building and district wise, that breaks it out by position. If there's a job category at the building level where there's five or less employees, it won't allow us to disaggregate the data for you. Because you're going to talk about ed specialists at an elementary school, well, there might be only three of them. And so we have that safeguard to protect their anonymity, where we can't disaggregate the data just in case there's only two or three of those people. They would feel like, well, they're going to know for sure I rated them low for administrative support and communication or something like that. So we take that very seriously. And that's why districts, we're also, I'm having on Friday with Tomahawk, they're their second year, and their response rate grew with their second year. Because more and more, they're like, okay, they're using the data to make things better. And they're not trying to single us out, they're not here to find out who said what about us. So that'll only get better. You bet.
Any other questions on the staff? All right, next one up, Darren.
Okay. I'm going to pull up, here with me, I've got to pull up that parent report that was being bumpy with me before. That showing up for you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's see what the parents said. So these slides are the same. You had a thirteen percent parent response rate. I will be very candid with the board, that's lower than we typically see. Typically, we see around twenty-five percent on the survey tools like this. Sometimes as high as thirty. It's very hard though, you know, with staff, you can hold a staff meeting and promote the survey. We send this out and we do both for reminders, but that engagement is a little lower than we like to see. Although, three hundred and thirty-four responses is a nice number. It's just not quite the percent we typically see or would like to see. Here's your distribution of responses. Which building they attended. And you'll notice this adds up to more than one hundred because you'll have parents with children in local buildings. This is always an interesting graph. Look at the distribution by grade, fairly balanced. Maybe a little uptick in ninth grade, but all there between ten and fourteen for every other grade level. Which gives us good data, grade level by grade level. And you'd be surprised how the data goes up and down based on grade level or any number of grades. We can do data mines for you by subcategory. In Slender, I did this by special education because we were worried about how our special education parents were feeling about the programming we were provided. And we needed to make some changes because we didn't get such capable results there. We did ask a local question. And again, kudos to you and Sam for the customization you did. I love, that's one of the things we're going to model at the board convention Friday, is the open enrollment questions that you ask. And the student activity questions you ask, and the employee question you ask. You ask, have you served the military or are you currently serving the military? Seventeen percent responded yes to that question. Again, indexes for parents. The indexes for the parent survey are how informed do they feel? How included does their family feel? How is the education going for their children through the eyes of the parents? The atmosphere the child is experiencing? And the overall family experience as far as feeling accepted, respected, and supported by the school. And again, every question on this survey feeds one of those indexes to arrive at that score, same rating scale, don't allow a three. So three is the true median. We did ask this question, and this is fairly new for our company, but with budgets being tighter than ever, and there's a limit to what you as a board and Sam as a district leader can prioritize. We asked the parents, what are your four areas of planning priority that are most important to you? And they put having a high-quality staff as number one. Mental health services for students, number two. And here, the observation made by the board member prior, number three on their priority list is to behavior discipline. Followed closely by school safety and career tech ed, Zul'ho is always in the top five. Our society absolutely recognizes that the trade gap, the skilled labor gap is very real. And the answer to that is public schools growing their programming there. And then the list descends from there because they could only pick four. They really pushed them to prioritize, just like you have established priorities as a board. So again, we're going to go from highest scoring, average score to lower on each of these sections of the survey. And we'll show you the gap and then show you the slides at the end that show the smallest gap and the largest gap. First three questions of the survey are related to the school board doing what it takes to make the district successful? And district administration doing what it takes to make the district successful? And then the overall direction the district is heading in being the right one. We asked them a communication question. Rate good, fair, or poor? And then we ranked the questions on there. All these questions are about school experience through the eyes of a parent. Again, highest scoring, local score for Sparta, the middle column to the lower. School facilities are clean and well kept. I have at least one school staff member where I feel comfortable contacting when I have an idea or concern. Feeling welcome at my child's school, knowing how to support my child's learning. School teaching with materials that reflect my family's cultural racial background. School staff treating them with their child with dignity or respect. My child feeling safe at school. My child breaks the rules or they're treated fairly. How updated do they feel about how their child is doing? Are there opportunities for parental involvement? Overall, my child is able to handle emotional challenges at school. Having opportunities to provide feedback to the school and the teachers. This survey, now, be more of them. Particularly if the board and administration is very explicit in getting back to them and saying, hey, thanks for taking the survey. This is what we're going to do in twenty-four, twenty-five, based on the survey results. That's good practice. School communication, timely and transparent. School has high expectations for my child. Most days my child enjoys going to school. Can they get help when they need it? Am I satisfied with how much my child is learning? Is there a healthy culture at school? And I'm satisfied with our school's efforts to address bullying. So again, looking at the gaps, oh, pardon me, we have a few more questions. Does your child currently participate or plan to participate in any school-sponsored sports or extracurricular activities? This is lower than we typically see. And it gets at the heart of what Sam asked on the student survey, which was awesome. So the questions where there was no gap or a very small gap, materials reflecting the family's cultural racial background. They feel like they've got a staff member that they can connect with, that they have a concern, approachability. They feel like they can support their child's learning, and they feel welcome in your school. And there are opportunities for parental involvement. However, the areas that had a bigger gap, concerns about, there's a gap there when it comes to dignity and respect. My child breaks the rules or school is treated fairly. Are they, children are able to handle the emotional challenges of school. My child, most days my child enjoys going to school. My child gets help when they need it. So there are some crossovers there where they talk about prioritization. Certainly, they put in the top three, behaviors. And again, talking about children breaking rules, all that's handled. But if we go backwards, again, a board member asked about satisfied with bullying. There's quite a gap there too.
I'm confused why that's, sorry, that's, it's not my turn yet, go ahead. Continue on Darren, go ahead.
Okay. And then the final closing question. Again, compared to the district averages of five point nine seven, how likely would you be to recommend our school to a friend or family member? With comparison averages of seven point five-six and Sparta came in at a five point nine seven. So these scores, the gaps, they're sometimes are not as wide as others, but these are where the percentile definitely compared to other districts were out of line. So that's why when you go back to this, it's not always just straight math. And that's why this item by item activity by the administrators should really drive this as much as anything. Because if I'm part of Sam's team, you look at where the staff report behaviors, you see where parents are reporting this. There's, you could put that in the bottom five just as easily because you already have some disciplinary concerns through the eyes of the staff. And if parents are rating this low percentage basis compared to other districts, it will have been quite as out of line as some of these. So this item analysis, you could take lots of different ways. That's why we include every question in this comprehensive report, and it's yours to report back to parents and report back to staff. And establish your priorities coming out of this exercise.
Yeah, it helps. I guess the only thing I was going to say is, you know, looking at the bottom five scores, we're at around point two-five from the comparison average to our average. But the bullying comment is almost, it's at point four-nine. So I mean, it's considered more divergent from the comparison average. So I guess I just don't understand why it's not more than bottom five.
Yeah, it comes down to that, some of that back data that we have, Sam, and the percentile.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Any other ones?
Yeah, those are free form comments, Sam. And what we did is I provided Sam a comment theme report and a summary of all the comments. That, we try to focus on data takeaways here on these slides. But when it comes to the comments, we focus on a summary document that you can peruse and have the takeaway. So this is a data report. The comment is more of a, like a read and sit down and study.
Sure, I understand that, thank you. I thought, I'm remembering that there had many numbers or plenty of names or something associated with those questions, but that's.
No, they were open-ended actually.
And also, even on some comparison data, the other districts, they're open-ended, and those are not questions that are coming out.
Correct. In fact, the district I'm working with, in about fifty minutes and seven-thirty, about half of their survey, just like this format, their survey was almost half custom local questions. And they're just establishing a baseline this year, and then next year, they're going to measure the growth on those custom questions in Campbell's quarter. You went with the standard survey that has deep comparisons based on the average score, percentile score, those kinds of things.
Anything else on the parents side? I'll just add one piece, more of a comment that I noticed less of. I'll just add a one piece, more of a comment that I noticed less of on Darren's. But the zero percent response from the ELL parents in that section is helpful to keep, keep trying new ways to, to get feedback from our ELL community. But that was one that stood out that I just want to let go before we move on to the next one. Other, any other questions? Otherwise.
Yep.
Switch on to the students.
Okay. Okay, students. Twelve hundred sixty-seven student responses. For a sixty-seven percent participation rate, which is, which is what we like to see. Typical is around seventy, so you're right there. Again, the two populations that you can control and create an environment where they're, they're able to be encouraged. And maybe even scheduled to take the survey, you got a good response rate. Just that parent population is tough. This is your distribution by site.
And it shows it here Herman when we did fourth grade, Montessori, we did fourth.
This is your distribution by grade level, very bell, seniors thinking about life after high school. We have four indexes for these students. We use a little bit of different terminology. We use the term definitely for strongly agree, sort of for agree, not really, and no. And same scoring, you take away the three. Um, and you see where their indexes are and every question on the survey feeds an index. So the first section of the survey, right from highest to lowest, classes and teachers. Types of questions I try my best to schoolable. I can go online or use a device, device when I need it. My teacher's calling me in class. If I need help, I can talk to my teachers outside of class. My teachers explain things in a way that I get. My teachers make their classes fun and interesting. And I can relate to what I'm learning. Even the, the lowest score will be classes and teachers section. Then life at school, teachers treat me with respect. I like to learn new things. I know my teachers care about me. I feel safe at school. I can be myself at school. Students treat me with respect. Feel safe answering questions in class even when I'm not sure I have the right answers. If I were bullied, I would feel comfortable talking to someone about it. And then again, as we go item by item. Talk about the triangulation, most kids at school follow the rules. I have friends to sit with at lunch or hang out with at school. As former elementary and high school principal, that one always bothers me when I see that child sitting all by themselves and they don't have anyone there. So that's why we ask that question. I have friends who help me when I need it. My parents' guidance helped me with school as much as they can if I ask. I like helping other people when I can. But I have a big problem, there's an adult at school I can talk to about it. I like working in groups with my classmates. And I talk to people outside of school about what I'm learning. We do ask a homework question. The homework and projects I'm assigned help me learn and are more than just busy work. We only ask this to high schoolers because we feel like that's more of a high school level question. So almost fifty fifty there on, is it more than busy work? Then a very important question. We ask them, whereas we ask the parents to prioritize programming, we ask the kids, what are some things that make learning hard for me? The blue bar are the high schoolers. And the gold bar are the fourth through eighth graders. You see the top area for high schoolers of stress followed very closely by keeping up with homework. And then the distracting behaviors of other students in class. For the youngsters, fourth through eight, that was the top distracting students or distracting behaviors in class was the top area of concern for, for the fourth through eighth graders. Followed by too much stress. Test anxiety and homework flow. Now we did have some questions with the students based on grade level where they could just check. And here's your data on whether they are involved in after school activities and if so, what? Fifty percent are not at fifth grade level. And then we've got the distribution of other things. Sam helps us tough mind this. Sixth grade activities expand. Sixty-four percent are not involved in anything. And seventh. Eighth, the activities expand further. And involvement goes way up because you see only twenty-four percent are not involved in anything there. And then once you get into high school, it's a nine through twelve reports. And twenty-eight percent are not involved in school sponsored activities. And then your distribution of what they are involved in if they are. All the way down the list. And then within the pre form comments, we provided Sam and his admin team and you as a board, a report that says what things do they like to be offered? So you have something, uh, constructive to work with there if you want, if you're, you decided to target more involvement. Uh, I, I love that you asked this question. I've long been a believer that kids don't all come to school to learn. Some of them come to school like kids or belong to something and learning then is a byproduct of just getting excited to be on the dance team or being, um, part of the proud committee or you name it, FFA. So as we talk about the gaps between questions and the comparison group. Areas that, that, that we, we highlighted here. Were these questions talking to people about what they learned outside of school, finds it being fun and interesting. Um, feeling safe answering questions. If I have a big problem, there's an adult I can talk to about it and that relates to what I'm learning. But then here, again, as we talk about, okay, what, what areas worry you? There's some respect worries, uh, through the eyes of kids as far as the gap there with, with students and with staff. And then, um, couple of safety questions worried about kids following the rules. Feeling safe at school. If I need help outside of class, I can talk to my teachers about it. So again, as we, we talked about looking for triangulations, that could probably jumps off the page to board. Then all three groups in different ways are expressing some worries about student behavior. And then we asked the kids, most days I like my school. The average score is a six point three seven. District average came in at a five point three seven. And again, we are able to give you reports. What's really helpful, um, and I know Sam and I have talked about this is you can go grade level by grade level and look at that question. Okay, most kids at school follow the rule. If it's too vague, could the district together report and say, okay, is there a place where we want to target it? We can look at your scores at every grade level. So maybe the, the district decides we're going to prioritize or pilot a program or do something at a specific building, something of that nature versus tackling the whole four through twelve population at one. You can look grade level by grade level and see where the problems are. If it's a middle school or it's an elementary or it's a high school issue. So that's where the desegregation can be a very powerful thing because this is not your only job. Uh, you've got all kinds of things that are asked the teachers and the administration and the board. So that'll help you kind of decide your areas of focus along with the support of an outside person like these to six and ten eighth. So any questions about the student report?
Well, I think that's it Darren.
Okay, so where this gets really exciting is if you decide that you want to do this again next year, we've laid down a baseline. Whatever Sam and his leadership team and you as a board decide are your priorities. We, we encourage you, if you do do it again next year, to, to take a survey at a very similar time. I think you'll see response rates grow. Then we can measure what progress you made from this year to next year based on, on, uh, the prioritization of the efforts made. So we can look for, we call that a longitudinal report and a lot of districts do it year after year based on what they're targeting that year. Um, and that gets, that gets really rewarding and exciting to work with you all. So just keep us, keep us posted on if you want to do that and Sam and I'll be in a lot of contact in the, in the days and, and all of that, so.
Any last minute questions for Darren? Well Darren, thank you very much. I greatly appreciate all your help leading up to this and, and being patient with us as we go through this process for the first time, so.
Oh, no, thank you for your patience with my, uh, my struggle sharing that doc. And, uh, I look forward to seeing you on Friday as we share, we tell Sparta's story, tell the districts about how you're trying to improve, uh, using data. So thank you.
Thanks a lot Darren, have a good night.
Take care, hey, good night.
So, um, as I stated earlier, the administrators, I will share with you the, the questions that they're going to be going through. Uh, staff, students and parents to do that. Uh, Ms. Ebersson Riley at Somerside's got the, the whole two there with, uh, parents and staff. So, um, the, the data is not where we want it to be and that's why we take these to get ready, to get out of the, I think what's going right to I know what's going right, I know where the challenges are and now we need to confront the data, now we need to control it. So I'll be working with the administrators, they'll be working with our teams. It, it's truly a team approach as we start to look at, hey, what are some low hanging fruit that we can tap right away? Uh, behavior, SEL, discipline, our focus area is there. It is continued to be our focus area, but we need to continue to get better. We need to not just say, hey, this is what we did last year. We need to tweak what we did to fit what we actually know now. You know, to bring people together, to bring, you know, how can we get more parental and community support, uh, through our staff members' eyes? How can we get our parents to, our kids to say, hey, we're effective with you supporting? So those are the types of specific questions that we're looking at. And as Darren said, it's different from Herman, for example, may not have that bullying issue. Herman may say, hey, yep, we think it's going well. Whereas the high school might say, eh, okay, middle school here. So it's really to dive in to that building model to really make systemic change across the board. Uh, meeting with, uh, Tim Nieske, uh, on August first, uh, to learn a little bit more if we can partner, uh, if you can lead us on. Once again, it's one or two times, it's not a, a long process. This process is kind of time to, they were to get you in, we get you the resources. And then it's basically how, how's it going through email and that sort of thing. So looking to give our administrators support power through the continuous. Any questions?
Yes, uh, so I guess the biggest thing for me is, I know we set the board the goal of having SEL. I think it's extremely important that we keep and maintain that. We try to fortify that. Continue to make that foundation, but I think it's really important to see, at least from my point of view, how we, administration plans to capitalize this. So I think I just want to caution that while we're looking, while you and Kevin are looking at the discipline bullying side of it. Let's not forget the number one goal is SEL. We keep pushing that while we learn and figure out how to get this.
Agreed, agreed.
But then if we do that, I think we're going to see a number of things go up. So it's, um, I think it's really important that we're planning on doing.
So today, here you, are we going to get like a building level or a pretty more?
The, the plan is, is to give you, uh, some snapshots of what they're doing.
Yes. Why? And why having this desegregated building format?
Yep, yep, yep. It's like the same way we do SEL through the, the quarterly progress.
Other questions? Otherwise, two B.
Okay, thank you.
Board education meeting minutes.
Nope.
Rob's right after your speaker.
Oh, okay. Um, Mr. Russ, more, more data and more numbers, but Mr. Russ asked me to just give a recap on your board meeting, um, on your YouTube channel. So just as a reminder, this is your YouTube channel that started in the heart of COVID, April seventh, twenty twenty. This channel been going, um, you have a hundred and seventy-six subscribers. That just means when you go live, um, somebody can notify that you're live. Um, and then over the course of that lifetime, you've had over sixteen thousand views on the channel. So just looking down there where you see where the live, so this is a, just a screenshot right from the channel. So, uh, the live portion, um, you can see your averages. So from the time that the channel started to today, um, you had over four thousand views, twenty-four thousand impressions on your live videos. Um, and your average view is thirty minutes. So like I said, this is from April seventh, twenty twenty till today. Um, and then if you look down in the next section, your videos, um, that's the ones that stay up longer. So your live is only on for the amount of time that you're live. Um, over ninety-nine thousand impressions. So that means, it doesn't mean that people are sitting there watching it, just maybe they're scrolling through it and that it was shown on somebody's phone or computer. Um, and again, an average view of four minutes. So then the other thing we did is since February, we stopped transcribing it into Spanish. Um, so this just gives a recap of, um, from February until through your June meetings. Uh, so your live stream peak is at what point, uh, the most amount of people were watching your live streams. Um, and then your views since it was published. So obviously you can tell that as time goes on, you're going to get more views on your meetings. So like you're once in June, you know, that's why they're lower. Um, and then I just did an average just to see at the end of it. Um, so what it tells me from looking at it is people aren't exactly saving time on their calendar to make sure that they're watching your live screen, stream, you know? But, um, but when there's something that is important, they know where to find it, which in my opinion is evident by having so many people seeing it and, and your different amount of views. Um. So it's been, um, shared in, so the newspaper does their saturation runs. And every time they've done that, we've included a blurb in there about the board meetings. Um, it's been in the Spartan newsletters that we've done. It was in back school information, um, and on social media as well as it's included every time with Wendy's, um, post on the website and in your agenda. So that's what I have. Any questions? And tonight, yes, that is doing the job of.
Remind us what the cost is again?
So we are not paying anything, um, since February, um, your portion that you're covering would be to staff the live streams, if I understand correctly. Um, so that would be your cost.
But to publish the YouTube, it's, it's perfectly free. It's not, I don't want to say minimize what it's done, but it's, it's not heavy lifting on YouTube.
Correct.
Other questions? Next, three C, high school property report. Let's let you the, the report. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. No, full curriculum.
Oh, there we go.
I jumped the guy.
Uh, thanks for giving me a chance to share, uh, um, some of our spring, um, some of our national qualifiers and some additional information from spring. So first two of our, uh, small group national qualifiers. And Callie actually just got back last week. And we're large group national qualifiers. And the top picture, they show you some of their hardware from the year there. And the top picture, they show you some of their hardware from the year there. Jury awards are announced this spring, so you'll see both fall and spring musical information here. Our spring musical was quite awarded. And if you so want to see the presentation when they did, I do have the live link, so you can put the jury awards there later on. It's about a three and a half hour show. They can zoom through it, right, and see where we have different performers and interviews and things like that. So, they do a great job of highlighting our artists. And then same for our fall musical. We actually, VAC, visual arts competition, but the visual arts team. This is, I think, our third year. This year's has gone down to the state level. This is the largest amount of competitors who's got to that state level. And then just a little review on some of our sports here. They did actually have our first time that we won a game in three innings by the 15 plus run rule. We won two games this year, so showing some improvement. Coach Mitchell, first year. Split with our state qualifier Logan from our conference. Obviously, quite a few girls out for soccer, and I think had our highest percent scholar athlete of our groups. We do have nine teams out for in our soccer league, so it's the highest number because we also had Arcadia in there and West Salem to our conference. First year for Coach Gumney. New school record for one of our track athletes, and you happen to know is, we just replaced the board, so we'll get a new strip for that. A new record that went up in the HMO. Nice contingent went to sectionals this year, we did not have anyone that went through the state. And then Coach Anderson was his first year as always gone. Oh, sorry. Any questions? Thanks for that.
Can you break down the qualification for a scholar athlete?
Scholar athlete, 3.5. So we actually break it down in two ways, we give them two different. So they actually get an academic award, so scholar athlete, everyone, 3.5. If you're a letter winner and 3.5, we give you an additional certification because you lettered and get that 3.5. So it's the MBC, all academic awards.
And what about the MBC's sportsmanship, each school given one per sport?
Each sport is a little different, it depends by season, but yes, sportsmanship, everyone's given one sport.
Questions?
I have a question about the visual arts team, that's the focus that I've been seeking from the year. Is there a certain type of media that they use or?
Sure, so we have a regional competition, I have this year UWL typically. And then they can do a couple of different things, so they can, there's sometimes you can bring some, there's onsite, which means their stuff is given to them there and they actually have to perform on it. There's some electronic things, so there's three, my understanding, three different ways that they can do that and then qualify to go to state. You're welcome.
Do you have a breakdown of the scholar athletes, the right comparable breakdown in GPAs with participants of visual arts, music, theater, the show class participation?
I do not, it's something we could track in the future. Part of it's just of how we enroll and make them sign up for things. But it's something we could do if that's something which.
That was just one of my questions, was also then, what we just looked at from the survey and how it's early, we all just got it like in the last week or two, right? But if there's takeaways from the student, the survey data that we just went through to improve some of these pieces as far as engagement numbers and support.
So would you, it's something I can add, Ms. Hammer's box, start tracking for future?
Yeah, that'd be great, just to be able to benchmark some of those things and know and not wonder, yeah.
What would you think?
Other questions? I don't really have questions, first off, the chairman had to say this to me, but I just wanted to thank you for all the hard work you put into the hot seat stuff this winter. So, I haven't had a chance to say that publicly, I wanted to, so thank you for that. I know they really needed the help, so thank you for that.
And hopefully, you know, I think we have an excellent tradition that we've done for several years of putting all the banners in the main hall, having all of these students that went to the state or national level that have had us and where everyone comes to the main hall, Spartan man leads, and they give on. So, you know, I know the high schools embedding in their graduate time, active, you know, being co-curriculars. So that's very clear, as you know, you go from think to know that your GPA increases, your self-esteem increases, your SEL increases, your academic engagement, behaviors, they all increase through the co-curricular opportunity, just like what Darren said there. So, we continue to work to build up communities with gift, to be connected in a way or another. Thank you. Thank you. Now, Mr. Press. 3A discussion, House Breakfast, true breakfast, my prices for next year.
So I appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I enjoy talking about food. So, I'm celebrating my first year, there's a lot of, I guess, excitement and accomplishments that we've done my first year.
I'm sorry, I just don't want you to block.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry about that, yeah. I just don't really like to lean, I could do that too, but, yeah, so I guess my first priority and my new role was to establish relationships. So, I spent a lot of time in the field this year, working with my teams, my staff, most importantly, getting out to the cafes and talking with the children. I enjoy talking with the littles, finding out their likes, their dislikes, and I spend a lot of time in the elementary schools. When I first started, I told, made the mistake of telling my staff, you know, I'm not going to overwhelm you guys with change. And they said, no, Rob, we'd like to see new menus, new ideas, and that sort of thing. I said, okay, we got about 30 days before school starts, so let's roll with some new menus. So, by the time school started last year, we adopted new menus and we standardized menus across all of the sites. So, the same thing that you saw at elementary schools, where the similar things that you saw at the middle school and at the high school level, just larger portion at those older levels. So with that came new order guides, new production records, and then new ways and processes for how we, in which we order food. That's what we focused on our inventory when I started, we had probably $75,000 worth of inventory. It was difficult to get our cool, the freezes, dry storage, and we were able to reduce that just by creating efficiencies. So that's what a lot of my work last year, we just spent standardizing our practices at all levels so that we could, that allows like one school staff member, if we're shorthanded, to go to another one because the processes were the same at each school. And when we do that, and we continue to work on streamlining efficiencies in our processes, that means that we can start to look to do special things. I'm looking at Toby, Principal Toby back here. We incorporated some special menus and special meals at Herman Elementary School, and I'd like to do this at all the schools. We started birthday months where we do celebrations for birthdays, those children that are celebrating birthdays on those months. We did a breakfast with pancakes and whipped topping and sprinkles and sausage, and that was fun. The other ones that we did was lasagna for Christmas, and we did a picnic at the end of the school year. So, those are some of the successes. Some of the things I'm going to continue to do is focus on streamlining processes and introducing new ideas and concepts. Farm to school is going to be one thing I'll be taking a look at this year, scheduled some meetings already to kind of focus on that. Yeah, and then also staff menus, those are going to be another thing. I'm going to focus heavily on participation levels, where we have lower participation, which would be our middle school and our high school. I'm taking a look at why the kids are ordering DoorDash and what we can do to get them to eat internally. And by doing focus groups and those sorts of things, I think we can accomplish that hopefully. I want to talk a little bit about the Sparta Backpack Program. This year, on average, we had about 169 bags that we sent home weekly, compared to 125 last year. We sent home 5,578 bags over 33 weeks at about $3.50 per bag. This one's incredible, the Sparta Backpack Program received nearly $38,000 in donations. And I was shaking hands and taking pictures, but I tell you what, and that was fun for me, but the volunteers are the ones that do the work. And it really was just creating an awareness and getting the need, I guess, out there, you know, to support the program. We had about $19,000 in expenses. Our beginning balance was 24,000, so our ending balance at the end of the year was 43,000. So this is a very successful program, it is a strong program. I remember, I know, this year we were asked if we could expand that to include the middle school and the high schools. And just, I guess, based on the volunteers, the number of volunteers and the space that we have, that would be difficult to do. But right now, just notice, you know, the program's strong and successful, and we're set up to kind of move forward and have a direction. Couple more things I'd like to share would be the Sparta Head Start. Prior to this year, we were just serving lunch meals. This year, we're contracted to provide summer meals for the summer. In addition to, we picked up breakfast and snack in the upcoming school year. So, that is strengthening a tie with a community partner that, and we're providing meals that the kids enjoy and the staff enjoys. So prior to this, they're receiving meals weekly and they have to prepare them. And we started day one, brought the meals hot and fresh for them, they're like, wow, you're going to spoil us, that's the plan, you know? So, just put our best foot forward there. Summer feeding program, we extended this year by 16 days. So we used to offer this just over the summer camp timeframe, but we've extended it in one or two, or one week, excuse me, before and one week after the start of our summer programs. We're doing these in the parks this year as well, so Evans-Bosser and Tom Gomez Park. We're also providing take-home meals, so in the parks, we provide lunch, they sit down to eat. We give them a breakfast bag to take home, so they have meal consumption the next morning. And we, as a district, receive reimbursement rates, reimbursements for not only the breakfast but also the lunch. On average, we see between 60 and 75 participants in the parks, and that might go down a little bit with the start of summer camp. And having those additional programs in the high school and at Herman and Southside. But for the most part, it continues to be strong. We see this week and last week, between 25 and 30 kids in the parks eating the meals. So it's fun, as I was talking to children earlier, it's enjoyable to see the kids interacting, eating meals and playing and having fun, you know? So that's a very positive thing. Kudos to Ms. Liz, who continues to take pictures and support the program and get the word out there because it has been pretty successful. Any questions about any of those? That's a good question, I have not heard of it. We, so when we did this, we sent a survey out to all households within our community and our district, and we received about 200 responses back. And based on the results of those surveys, where we did ask the question, where would you more likely visit out of the five parks? And these were the ones that were, these were strategically chosen, excuse me, based on like our community. So we have one at Tom Gomez and then one at Evans-Bosser, and we also feed at the high school as well. So it kind of creates a little bit of a triangle within the community. But we have not heard that. What I do see is some that can't, they might not make the window at Evans, so they come to Tom Gomez or because they're eating, you know, eating at the high school breakfast, they'll come to get lunch in the parks, just, parents, guardians, you're doing their best to kind of like make it work in their schedules. It seems to be working.
Mr. Press, but I had a quick question on the summer feeding program. So, 60 to 75 participants, that's an unbelievable number to think about, it's pretty amazing we were able to help that out. Are you, you have enough meals to go around if there were more, or do you run out and then there are kids that?
We have not run out, and we got to kind of, we communicate, we base these numbers on like just daily, you know? It's like, okay, the numbers drop, let's send 35 if the number's 30, so we always try to have enough. But I do have two staff members in the parks, and we do have communication, and it'd be just as easy for us to run to Herman and get some more. We haven't had that happen, we've kind of robbed Peter to pay for all a little bit. Like Evans, we ran out, so we're going to go, you know, we'll just take some from Tom Gomez that we have set up, if it works.
Yeah, you've never had it.
Have not run out yet.
Thank you.
And haven't had too much leftover too, which is, you know, my job to make sure that that doesn't happen, we got to control the waste as well, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so now I'm going to talk about, give you a summary of our financial performance for nutrition services this year. Our revenue was down about $24,000, and our total budget expenses were up $138,000. Now I'll get into the details about this in just the next couple of slides. Basically, our revenue, our state and federal reimbursement rates, it dropped significantly over the course of the last couple of years, and this continues to have a financial impact on us. And our expenses, our supply chain, as we know, the cost of food in the stores is no different than what we're receiving, more purchasing cases of these things that are distributed, as the price of food has gone up considerably in addition to labor, and we had utilized some subs this year to fill some holes in our staff. Basically, our federal breakfast aid remained relatively the same, so I won't get into the discussion about that. It was give or take, you know, a couple of thousand dollars. But our federal lunch aid decreased significantly from the prior years. We're down 37 cents per meal for paid students. So those are the students that are not on free or reduced, that have to pay for full meals. So, this reimbursement that comes back to the state, from the state is down 37 cents. We're down eight cents for reduced and free status as well. So the total deficit this year was $52,000, using 23 and 24 total meals, if that makes sense. So what I did was I took the total meals for this year, I used the reimbursement rates for 22 and 23 compared to 23, 24s, and this is where our deficit lies.
And before you continue, the reimbursement rates were not set at the time of last year when we did not have the increase, nor are they known right now?
That is correct, unfortunately, reimbursement rates don't come out until the tail end of July, and it's difficult for us to make decisions on meal prices when we don't know what those reimbursement rates are.
So would it be fair to say that we had $24,000 deficit?
Yeah, we'll get to it, you bet. Well, good question.
Yeah.
So the state breakfast aid, so we have, there's two different ways that we receive reimbursement, through federal, and then this is the state one here. So, in 22 and 23, our state reimbursement per meal was 15 cents, in 23 and 24, that was six cents this year. So, that's a 60% drop, ultimately leading to a $19,000 deficit, again, using those 23, 24 meal totals. State lunch aid was down $34,000. So between the federal and the state aid total deficit, there was $105,000 that we did not capture to ensure that we would have, if the reimbursement rates would have remained the same. Are there any questions about that? So, meal price recommendations, I just want to share this as I looked at the history of our meal pricing. During the 2020, 21, and the 21 and 22 school years, breakfast and lunch reimbursement rates, we received free meals as part of the COVID relief. we received free meals as part of the COVID relief package. So last year, we decided to, we started charging again, 22 and 23, but we did not increase for the 23, 24 school year. A little bit more to note, we provide free breakfast, and this is different than most other districts within our region. Free breakfast is currently offered at Herman, Selk, Montessori, and Sales. Last year, we served over 204,000 meals, and about 34% of those were given to students who are on pay to reduce for free or at no charge. This was an expense to the organization of about $120,826 based on what we consider to be our suggested prices last year, which was $2.10 for the elementary, at the elementary level. Does that make sense?
I'm not understanding that third bullet. 30% of the food is paid for all of these students at night, right? Should that be free over there?
Nope. So the free, are, we get reimbursements through the state for the free meals. The paid and the reduced, are those that, those families have to pay full price for their meals or have a reduced status where they have to pay? For breakfast, it's 30 cents per meal.
So add that back, how many children, what are the families that hear about?
Right. Exactly. And that's kind of why I wanted to share this today, because just throw those numbers out there as we talk about meal prices and what we want to do is based on, you know, our recommendation.
Does that mean the other 66% are free or reduced?
Yeah, that means that they would be free.
Free, yeah.
Okay, so as we talk about meal price recommendations for breakfast, if there was no increase, this means that we would, you know, obviously continue to see that $120,000 deficit, which are expense to us, which is basically our recommendation. And that for, so that would be for the paid students and the reduced students there. If we were to charge for the reduced students, we would be looking at breaking even at that 30 cents. We cannot charge more than 30 cents for a reduced-priced meal per GPI guidelines, for regulations. So what you're seeing at the top of the screen, there are the 50 cents, the dollar and the $2. If we're to, I guess, charge $2 for breakfast, that means that we would ultimately be kind of breaking even and not being, not seeing that $120,000 loss or expense. Does that make sense?
If we would go to 50 cents, $1, $2, the universal breakfast would go away.
Right.
Those would go away.
Right. So at 50, if we're charging our families 50 cents per meal, our students 50 cents per meal, we would receive a revenue of $27,678, but we would still have a shortfall or an expense there. The only way that we would actually kind of break even would be to offer the meals at $2.10.
So one of the things, our recommendation, administrative recommendation is not to increase. What we're trying to do is really promote that breakfast even harder at all levels to get more participation across the board, more participation, more reimbursement, so really tackle that. We're going to talk a little bit about fund balance coming up as well, and that'll come into play a little bit too, but trying to do our efforts in education, promotion through the various schools. Top. How much, how much are students that have to just charge for breakfast? At which level?
S H S.
Oh, it's 215 for middle school, 225 for high school. Sorry. So you were asking, because I was confused.
I meant S H S.
S H S is 225 for breakfast.
Do we charge, do we charge?
Yep, and that's it, 215.
Moving on to lunch then. So that was just kind of a painted picture of what, like we said, we want, we recommend that we still offer universal free, we just want to kind of paint a picture of what that is, what that costs the organization to do so. Numbers that we said we haven't discussed before. So moving on to lunch, we're recommending a 5 cent increase, so that would increase our total revenue by $5,255. You can see the total paid meals there and the revenue from last year. That would be our recommendation. I received word today, I think I'm safe sharing this, that Toma is consistent pricing with us, you know, they mirror our pricing and they are actually increasing 5 cents as well across the board, so that would regionally kind of keep us the same. Before I move on, I guess, is there any other questions there?
I have a question for the, the pricing is not with the, the type of level, is that only for breakfast or?
No increase to breakfast.
Okay.
Yep, 5 cents.
Five from the breakfast program calls.
For lunch.
Sure. So can you know the percentage of ELL students that we have or, yeah, in our, in our district? Do we know how many of those students are participating in the free and reduced program? And is there a way that we can reach out to those families to make sure that, you know, they're like the people as well? And we're concerned with people working with things like that that make the difference in doing that, but I'm just curious of what, what we're doing to make sure that family feel...
Just asking.
So Marissa, we both have that with our district manager, but she's more. I also call her a friend of Lisa, and so she definitely, you know, works with families, ensures families, helps them navigate some of those things, so she's very popular. So do you know the percentage? I think. Call that, is it the same thing I showed you today?
Perfect.
I can call that number and I can get that into the notes compared to...
I'm sorry, go ahead. I was going to ask a question. There's no reason we stop the meal prices, we will be knowing the federal reimbursement there is. We're going to tell them by the end of July if we want to take them back and make a budget by the end of the month. I would say to, so we can set our budget and families can know, that would be my initial thought process on that, just to let families know.
And actually, I think it's the state reimbursement that doesn't come out until mid-year, you know? So we, it's, and the federal one comes out quite late, at the end of July, maybe even early August, I think. We just don't have that information available, as early as we'd even like to have it.
Mr. Press, would it be beneficial for us to wait on setting that price until we find that information out? Would it be beneficial, or would you rather have it earlier? Like, the sooner the better?
I think the sooner the better, for Sam reasons.
Yes.
For sure. Sam, I do not have another slide on the, on the fund balance, no, but I think our fund balance at the beginning of the year was around 500,000, and ending balance was about $367,000. So that is just incorporating that shortfall there this year with the shortfall. It started at over 500. Obviously, we have the balance of 150 coming out, so there will be some transfer from their fund balance to the balance of others. So it's about $365,000 now, just three cents. Very important to have a healthy balance. We think we can move forward with another year, you know, really promoting that breakfast, but for a different model, we'll be taking a look at that. Rob's looking at, you know, his equipment and that sort of thing, and obviously minus Herman, and even at Herman, we've had some issues with some of the equipment already. Metal used, 20-plus years old, and those aren't cheap to replace. So we feel that this is a good recommendation going forward, based on the information we have at the time.
Mr. Ben Gilbert, I move to recommend to the full board, approval of breakfast and lunch prices for the 2024, 2025 school year as presented. There'll be no increase for breakfast and a 5% increase for lunch. I am pleased under consent. Motion, Mr. Sholde, second, Mr. Wells, any further questions, discussion? All right, this one should be a roll call now. No, sorry, all in favor, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion to the full board. Thank you, Mr. Press. Good job.
All right. Thank you.
Three D, discussion about our commission, free resolution authorized in the school district to issue general obligations bond amount not to exceed 87 million.
All right, now this is the legal ease for the referendum. The final step in the referendum process, saying that we're going in November, is to draft the resolution language and forward that to those that need it. Before we get into some draft language, we shared some language with the board through notes, samples, and that sort of thing. But the main thing that we wanted to make sure everyone understands is the readability in life. And, you know, that's important. Flexibility to do the needed work. So we want it to be broad enough that we can have it happen, but we don't want to make it too broad to think that if the board is saying, well, wait a minute here, they're doing anything they want with the money. So, but we want to have that flexibility. And we want to keep in mind that this might be, no matter how well we communicate, this might be the first time a person sees this question, topic, or anything like that on that ballot. So when we put those all together, it's very important that we do our best to make sure it's clear, how much, what do we need it for, and to move forward, the best begin using the legalese that were required. Also, we list the schools, we say district-wide. You know, we have Herman, but if we say district-wide, that length, that shortens the question. And one might argue that we might have a situation at Herman that's not under warranty, and we need to use a referendum rather than out of capital funds. And specific projects listed. Do we want to list the demolition of S H S in addition? Do we want to list secure entrances? Safety, security, they're good ones, you know? So what do we really want to list? But if we say safety and security, that includes secure entrances. But some people may say, well, that's too broad. So it's really a balance. And before we get into it, this is just a recommendation that we would go to the full board. So the goal tonight is to craft the language the best we can. We'll send it off to Corals and Brady to verify that this is what we wanted to do and it's legally, we will pass the legal. So that's, that's the goal for today. If we don't meet that goal, it's perfectly fine. We have until mid-August to do that, so, but we're hoping by the end of July, we have this and move on to communication. One thing that you will see on all the samples we did, that this language is the legalese that we believe needs to be on no matter what question we have. So this is Ray from Corals and Brady, chapter 67, that's the stuff that we really can't mess with. Consisting of, now we can start to play with the world. And these are just some ideas that we will share through the notes and that sort of thing. You know, I'm not going to read them all. You know, safety, security, capital maintenance, renovations, additions, S H S, district-wide, including secure entrances, instructional addition of high school, demolition, district-wide capital maintenance, building infrastructure improvement, renovation of the main entry. So all of this language would be, would be suitable. And it's just really about crafting what comes after that. So administration, the biggest thing that we have is our recommendation is keeping those in mind. Because I, you know, I don't think we can go on with something but the way the reader reads it. That's why there's, there's a discussion among us. So that is where we are at.
Anyone have initial comments, suggestions, place to start? I can start talking, but.
Because the majority of the money is going to that high school portion, we should start with that. Start with safety, security, whatever. So I, I would suggest start with that word, or something to that effect. And then you want to get attention, you have questions. And just to read by the name.
So based on what you just brought up there, Mr. Andrews, so I'm looking at a different school district's question, and it says, improvement program consisting of renovations and additions at the current middle school. So it could be renovations and additions at the current high school, and then, then carry through with that safety, security, capital maintenance. I was thinking district, infrastructure, and safety. We're really in CTE, I wonder if that's...
That's all, it's improvement. But I just wonder, seeing that word, CTE.
Yeah, you have the, you know, the, such, the, the picture, you know, touching all those things. And then if we want to handle that now, you know, reconstructing Sparta High School, safety and security and that, I don't know, I mean, like the last part of core, because it's just, you know, there's a balance in the part where a lot of people would get, you know, with the fine print versus the actual goal idea, which is there's structural challenges in the high school that they need to be dealt with, right? There's, there's a big safety concern about having secure entrances at our middle school, but that's something that is dealt with, right? So, right, capital maintenance, something else important.
Only thing with that, Mr. Wells, Mr. Reston, just off the top of your head, how much approximately is the Sparta High School now? I think it's only 87 million, I believe, is what it's about. So that was my main reason, or main thought, kind of like what John was saying, is the biggest chunk is going there, and so to be specific to the fact that we are doing an addition or renovation and addition to the high school and safety, security. For me, that's, that's our big ticket item, right? So I guess that was why I conditioned that first.
That's what I was kind of saying, just that when you mentioned the Florida, they'll really like that last bit, the Florida, then it goes to the, you know, the, it goes, it makes it too detailed, and I think we just want our top three things, you know, this is what I'm, this is what's, is what I'm thinking, so we really want to get home, because that's our goal, right? Just to, I guess, structural challenges from safety and security. My concern though is, safety and security, capital maintenance, all that, if we don't mention furnishings, fixtures, and equipment, I'm concerned the same. We can get ourselves in the box because of that 60 million or whatever, 2.4 million, 2.4 million is for furnishings and fixtures, which is even more than the proposed safety improvements at the middle school. So we can't, I think, we can't leave that out. Again, I would go back to the fourth bullet. Next, I would put capital maintenance, and I would end with safety and security. Sounds like I'm minimizing safety and security, but by putting it at the end, I emphasize it rather than burying, burying it. Anything on that?
What did you say? That turned the conversation around.
Wanted, all is warm. I think it would be very worthwhile to make it... Wanted, well, it's more, I, I think it would be very worthwhile to make it end the third file, because that would, would, would. Where you wouldn't, you were writing, continuing to write it on that, on that whole point, where it was. So, I try to be clear, and it takes a while. But without, just the balance of being clear and concise, because I've heard some things, and the, like, that, where we were very successful on being, being concise with our operating of the referendum. Because we listed the things that we wanted to do and get done, where we had a high success rate. Yisodo was just like, we just need money, and they never, they listed, and they stripped, I don't know, forty points or whatever. So, I mean, it's very important that we have that clear science.
Uh, yeah. The other school district. It says, uh, improvement programs consisting of renovations and additions at the current middle school. And then it says renovations and building infrastructure improvements at the elementary school. Then it says site improvements, including additional parking in the bus area, the things that they need. Then they end with, and acquisition of related furnishings, fixtures, and equipment.
I, I mean, that's, that's, I like that. I, I do think it, uh, sorry, I'm.
You're okay, well, let's, we can hear more, but if you're okay. Well, what I can do is, is that I can get out of this presentation, and then I could do split screen, kind of like what we did, you know, hey, start typing some things in so we can see it. If you're okay with that. That's why we're not screening this screen. All right, so I'm going to do this. That you can't see. I'm going to do this. And I'm going to do this. So, I'll do that. Okay.
So, maybe I can copy and paste that with the previous slide over, so that. So, which one?
Is it the, uh, slide thirty-five?
Yeah.
So, thirty-five. Okay.
Yeah, so, uh, consisting of renovations, renovations and additions at the current high school. Renovations and building infrastructure improvements at Bedo View Elementary. I'm sorry.
That's one.
Middle. School. And then, uh, semicolon, uh, site improvements. And then it says, including additional parking and a new bus transfer area, but that could be at S E L C. So, that would be, um, site improvements, including additional parking and a new bus transfer area at Southside Elementary. Another semicolon. An acquisition of related, sorry. Of related furnishings. Comma, fixtures, and equipment.
Yep.
I agree.
I'm sorry.
Absolutely. So, you could say renovations and building infrastructure improvements at district buildings.
Or district-wide.
I would say merged the last, like, I like the high school renovation piece that we were talking about, because that is a big, big chunk, but there's a way we can merge those last renovations and infrastructure improvements at Bedo View, I mean, district-wide, then.
I'm only reading out the other ones. I have a big work to do, but I, I guess, demolition, renovate, uh, demolition and additions, or?
We, because there are some people that are going to go to the ballot box and see that. It could be five people, but it's, uh, I believe it does not fit in the high school area.
So, consisting of demolition of the older port, portion of Sparta High School.
You think building infrastructure improvements, the thing you have, tearing down and putting out. I, I don't know.
I really like that.
Sam, what parts, what parts are we following by?
The top one.
Top, the top sentence.
Top one, so, does it include all of our buildings? No, I admit, when you're great with the writing right now, like, if we just didn't include Southside Elementary in this, in our bottom ten minutes here, we would not be able to put one support the Southside Elementary side, right? Because of course, this is first. But it's the thing on the top, kind of all encompassing, even though I don't see it.
I, I think right now, it doesn't touch the other buildings, other than Southside High, uh, S H S. I mean, not directly, but you know, that's the way I read it, and that's why we, we craft these, we get into Corals and Brady. Corals and Brady knows what we're trying to do with the draft language they sent. And so, this is some of the draft language that others have used and that Corals and Brady.
Okay, we took all of the, so, no, the middle school, and we just listed other districts.
District buildings. Improvement at district buildings.
Including, but not the. And. Right. Instead of that at the end, in all other needed capital improvement projects, district buildings. The bad, all they're like, they don't like that. What, what kind of big drawing all this?
I think it's consisting of demolition of the nineteen-sixties portion of the, uh, nineteen-sixty portion of the renovations and additions. Am I way too worried?
I don't think, getting rid of all the nineteen-sixty addition, or portion.
There is something that you'll.
You'll can be at the inventory, and so it's.
Really coming back to the language that John mentioned in number four.
Yeah.
The construction of an addition to Sparta High School and demolition of the older portion of the building. Acquisition furniture, new equipment, and then possibly do renovations and building infrastructure improvement at district buildings.
Can we say renovations and capital maintenance? At other district buildings?
That would cover the boiler going out scenario now.
Definitely, other working, maybe, uh, capital maintenance.
I guess I feel like we need to have safety, security. Safety and security or something.
We've got improvements twice, so I would just say capital maintenance, I think we could change capital maintenance.
What, so, if we take up building into Sparta Church, district-wide, and we include capital maintenance, of the coverage.
And then that's might be where safety and security comes in, with safety and busing, safety and security, and friends.
So, instead of site improvements, including additional parking, into safety and security, infrastructure.
Does the A D A include it?
Nope. I don't think you had to get rid of. My off base, I don't think you had to get rid of that.
That's, uh, that's perfectly fine. I just don't know if that was going to be included in safety and security. I'm going to go back to those are the three things that we talked about. And that's my.
No, I did, I did. Use minimal language.
I don't think additional parking is that difficult.
But that's right.
Yeah.
What I was getting at is that, I'm pretty confident that to a parent of a child that goes to Southside, sees that a bunch of kids walking on sidewalk, nothing but, you consider that as a safety and security improvement. So, instead of having that safety and security from, from, you just replace that with site improvements. So, just read, safety and security upgrades, including additional parking and bus transfers on second. Here's an example of our.
Yeah. And that example ended up taking to a string. We can educate that, but we can't educate the non-parent that's never heard about this. And that's where you put, I, I'm not concerned about Southside, you know, Southside Elementary plus transfer area. We get rid of parking, we all was wrong with it. I don't know what's wrong with it. That's the, maybe, the downside of that.
I would say from a wordiness standpoint, maybe. Capital maintenance at district buildings to include safety, security, and ADA upgrades, and acquisition of related furnishings, fixtures. Capital maintenance at district buildings to include safety, security, and ADA upgrades. And the acquisition of related furnishings. I don't want to say, I don't want to say upgrades.
And then you can have.
And then get rid of everything all the way down to that, that semicolon.
I like that.
Because now we're sure, sweet point, we're hitting every, what are missing? Would you like to?
Do something with that first portion to include demolition.
Yeah, fourth, uh, fourth, I think.
Absolutely. Uh, to the.
Yeah, to build, construction. You want to put furnishing at, uh, furnishing.
No, because that's not.
Did you want them, did you want that up by the high school?
I don't.
And end with, go back to John's, ending with safety, security, and that, that's fine. I don't want to be specific to the high school, right?
Yeah, we're.
No, it's, it's still going to be open. I, I think it's still open, if, like, they can send a couple persons.
Damn fancy.
Construction, uh, an addition to Sparta High School, renovation, or the part.
Could we, how does rebuilding, President, have this rebuilding, yes? Could we say, construction, demolition, and renovation of portions of Sparta High School? Without the battery.
Construction. Demolition.
Yeah.
That just sounds like a demolition fair.
What would you like to do? Well, portions, so I don't know, you say portions. Does he demolish a portion, he add a portion, and then a big portion.
Well, that's the order of operations that we're doing, but we don't necessarily have to, like, I don't. Well, here, let me do this. Proceed. Control B. I believe this is how we. Have you got it, and dash capital maintenance? Next, with that, we're reading. Can you put, uh, and demolition of nineteen-sixty portion of the building?
I don't like that, I, I'm a smart person, but I. Oh. Yeah, but, but we need to be clear, we're not demolishing every nineteen-sixties portion.
He said, oh, just some, some of it are.
Portions of the nineteen-sixties, though.
Well, we know it's not going to be a portion. Math wing, they just built thirty-nine. Motion of a portion of the nineteen sixty-two. Demolition of.
Say nineteen sixty-two.
No, I think it was better to, like, nineteen sixty-two where it was, because again, that, that sounds like it's going all the way. If there's the nineteen-sixty portion of the building, although I'm assuming there's a portion of the nineteen-sixty-two. They include some parts, we keep, do we have?
I could say the portion.
Sure.
That sounds like, yeah.
Now, if memory serves me, that wasn't at the end of May meeting, but the ADA portion was originally not on the eighty-seven million. It was the, I don't want to say alternate, but it's, I mean, alternate or the option. So, my concern would be is to, I would say that, not to say that, hey, we redid a bathroom, but I would say, what are you doing? You know, the question would be, after we communicate this, what ADA compliance are you doing? Because we're going to have to educate people on, on the question. Safety, security, capital, that's all fine. The ADA portion, I'm a little, I'm struggling with a little bit, just because of. Okay, that's a huge ADA requirement. Yep, you're right. I just thought it was. It is. But no, you're providing, but that's, thank you. Yep, that's, that's a huge requirement. Yep. Better not, for you, feel better about that? Yo, yo. So, include ADA upgrades, safety and security?
Well, so then.
I'm not talking about.
Well, we're essentially getting back to, I can't remember if John or Sarah said it, but if we just do that, and the acquisition of the related furnishings right after the nineteen sixty-two building, and then end with the ADA upgrade, safety and security.
and then end with the ADA upgrade, safety, and security.
If demolition related furniture, all of that, that's just a high school.
Yeah, that's right.
So could we just put it after, in district buildings, to include acquisition of related furniture, fixtures, equipment, and equipment, comma, or semicolon, ADA upgrades, semicolon, and safety, security, and security?
Yep, so putting acquisition to include acquisition of related furnishings.
Right after the, well, right after.
Renovation, yep.
Renovation, capital maintenance, district buildings to include acquisition of that, that from first. And then ADA upgrade.
Is there a period about that? Oh, two, semi-colon, okay.
Yeah.
Semi-colon?
Yep.
No, there it is, I'm sorry. And once you have locally developed, what do you want to do? In equipment, so that would be getting rid of the and, equipment, and then you ADA upgrades.
I would say.
And equipment, semicolon, ADA upgrades, safety, and security.
Yeah.
Okay, so you had to put in there. Semicolon, ADA upgrades.
You could do that semicolon, safety, and security.
You're gonna try. Once again, this is sending it to Coral's Brady. You know, hey, what do you wanna do if this is what we wanna do again? Where does the ADA come in? We didn't mention that earlier. This is what that ADA, you would really work it through with Coral's Brady. That's in the equipment. Technology, yeah, we'll come surveys, technology is important. Related technology, furniture, fixtures, technology.
I was gonna say, I think we should find a way at least that technology, I didn't know if we should find a way to have CD in there as well, or.
Yeah, that's, that's career and technical, you know, that's.
Yeah.
Related furniture, fixtures, technology, and equipment. So you don't like the CD. It's just longer.
Oh, you have.
Oh, yeah.
Not to be remiss here, but that nineteen sixty-two is the negative of the building, and not a portion of the building. So what it is, is that it's saying that nineteen sixty-two is the name of that, which is not true, but it's in the calendar, so.
Demolition of the nineteen sixty-two portion.
It's perhaps. Of, of, uh, portions of nineteen sixty-two.
To a portion. Demolition of the portion of the building. The building, the building. I'm not an English guy. I think that we have, we, well, I, I think we're, we're, we're wordsmithing now. And Coral's and Brady may say, we're all, not, and we'll come back on the twenty-second and, you know, and jump to that again. I think this gives us a good start. I think they know what our intent is. So some new things that we added are, you know, this is one, we focused on the high school, because that was our main focus, that's a large portion. We were very generic in renovations and capital maintenance of the district buildings, but to include most things. So my question would be to, uh, I guess I wouldn't have a question, is, is that all that we can do?
This, this question is shorter than the other one that happened in the question as well. I, I like it. I'd experience it, Todd's point, would the addition of the word original, demolition of a portion of the original nineteen sixty-two.
Yeah, it's hard to say, no one can read that. That helps. That's all.
We, we are talking about a specific building.
It's just a portion of it. I like that. I think that's, I mean, I feel comfortable saying that. Then we'll get feedback and. Okay, in theory, yes. Or they'll say, no, we can't, or they'll say, you know, where's, I'll ask whatever approach comes to this. Can we do this? Can we, you know, just start throwing hypotheticals? Can we do, don't boil it out, uh, effort? Can we do this? Mr. Burd, I take a motion to recommend approval to the full board, a resolution authorizing the school district to issue general obligation bonds. Any amount up to eighty-seven million? Okay. Vote for Mr. Sholzy, say my Mr. McKenna. All those in favor of. I'm gonna do a roll call here. Sorry, any further discussion? Before we send it on to people. Ms. Marquardt, roll call, please.
Ms. Perrin? Yes. Ms. Lopez?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Sholzy?
Yes.
Mr. Brent Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Minder?
Yes.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Motion was for it, for what, for sure. Well, it's, it's just that. Yeah. I'm gonna leave it that way, I can. All right. Would you like the break or did we go through it a little bit more? I know we have the WIAA and the, uh, co-curricular handbooks before the other. We do that and then take a break before the. Before. Before three F, yeah. Is that okay? Does that sound good? Yeah, good, that sounds good. All right, three D, discussion and possible recommendation to approve twenty-four, twenty-five WIAA membership rules for high school, middle school, and sales. Mr. Walkup, Mr. Sam.
What? Um, four slides, you'll see pretty much a mirror. Uh, in the upper right-hand corner is the renewal. Um, these are the sports that we've offered, um, for the past couple years. Um, and what the renewal allows us is to maintain those sports. Um, we do need board approval in order to maintain that membership.
Uh, and then middle school, uh, I guess those are the sports we offer. I will, one caveat I'd like to offer is that the winter, girls do participate with the boys wrestling, but it's not a girls wrestling program because it's not a standalone with girls only competing against other girls, their own, you know, schedules. Um, but girls have always been able to participate with their boys wrestling program. Uh, and for the membership, the WIAA middle level, um, there's really, you know, um, I don't know what I'm saying, there, there's not really like a, a negative or a con, there's very few schools in the state that are member schools, I think there's like forty to fifty. Uh, the one benefit it does give us is that there's concussion insurance, uh, should a student get injured during a WIAA weather contest. Yep.
So the, the sports are open to all students in the community, but they're, um, that's a little fun. So having it, I believe, having it under the WIAA does not impact that, but I would think it would.
It, it does, that's one thing that is the, I don't wanna say turn a blind eye on, but it's our fund eighty, and the benefits of being in the WIAA.
And if there's some companies that, okay, they're not. That they're not coming to us.
They're not, as of right now, they're not.
I'll also say that in our, our middle school conference bylaws, it does require us to be, uh, member schools to be a WIAA member school. However, I've explained the situation with our fund eighty, uh, and we actually have the exception. So currently, the Three Rivers Middle School Conference says you must be a WIAA member school, except Sparta. So you could choose not to be a member school, or you could choose to be a member school, have those benefits.
So we're not required, but if you are, it's still.
Other questions? Is that under channel? I make the motion to, uh, for you are WIAA sports memberships for level seven.
I do have one more question before we have to go to that. Um, so according to the WIAA rules, the students, students, um, who are, who, there's been a, an investigation and they're in the fill process, they're ineligible to participate. Um, the qualities that we're going to be discussing later don't indicate whether or not during that time, students are eligible enough. So does the WIAA have that, and you can bar?
Yes, so we, we have to follow that, and I don't have it in there, and that's a correction I would have to add.
Oh, no, that's not your policy, it's the other department's, the department's, not your policy. I mean, not, not anything, I don't, I, what I'm trying to say is I don't think, I think you're responsible for that.
Yes. Right.
Not co-curricular.
Yes.
Motion for Mr. Minder?
Is there cost to have a middle school with WIAA?
Is that free?
Same with high schools.
Now, there is a caveat that they have in there that they could impose a, a cost to a member schools, but that would not, that would be very. Some good service, but it is possible, but I don't think that's.
John, can I?
I'll say.
Say to Mr. McKenna, more question? I, you're good with consent too, Mr. McKenna?
I am.
All right, uh, seeing no more questions, uh, all those in favor of approving WIAA renewal for high school and middle view on consent as presented? Hand sales, yeah. Yeah, thanks. Hand sales, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion is for the full board. Thank you. Right into the next one. Three D, discussion, possible recommendation to approve co-curricular handbooks.
Not sure if you had a chance, uh, just kind of walk through some of these changes here and what they mean a little bit. So, uh, figure skating is a group that would like to receive a letter. Um, does not mean we fund them or anything else, but per board policy in order for us to have them represent us. It must be approved by the board in this process, so they would get added. Um, one we think we've missed is rodeo. Um, we do sign off. Um, myself and Mr. Ford has to go check grades, they, you know, so for them to participate. They do represent Sparta, so that would be in addition also. Magical's not something we've offered recently, so those are the changes on page two. Page three, uh, one of the recommendations that came out, I believe, last summer, um, from one of our, um, discussions, um, was the ability, um, to have some cutting allowed at upper levels, and juniors and seniors only. Um, this prob, so right now, this would affect at maximum, I believe, two sports, which has been girls volleyball, boys basketball. Each program typically has fifty-plus students, and we will have typically some juniors and seniors that go typically for the first time. That may not be the only ones that are cut, but those are typically the ones, um, at those top two levels. Page six, changes, um, that was something I must have missed, we had not followed that. Um, we put a fine and then, um, we were not preventing student athletes from participating. Um, page nine, um, just adding any type of harassment is something we could deal with. And then page ten was a recommendation from last fall. There's actually a couple changes there. Um, one says athletic code violations and striking the and may not be served concurrently. So if someone would miss a game, um, or being out of school suspended or something, they would not be missing an additional, um, having double, double jeopardy type thing.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wall, did you guys? Was your. Title document? That's it. Did I read, did I see the last one, but here it's discrimination.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, it would be discrimination, I did not correct the cover page. That was my fault.
So the addition is discrimination, not harassment?
Correct, sorry about that.
Harassment's still not cool.
He's still not cool, but.
Everyone was saying.
In the document, it would be discrimination.
I want, I want to.
Sure, if we go there, I think it'll make more sense.
Final round, trying to roll call.
Control plus?
Control plus. Yeah, chimeric plus, right?
Okay. So, three and four, um, used to be a combined thing, or a combined statement. So we separated them to clarify, and so for instance, um, the change is co-curricular co-suspensions and academic analogy must be served consecutively. Right, so if I have a, I'm suspended for something from one event, co-curricular, and something for other, I, I must serve one and then the other. But there is no, nothing in there for other type of suspensions. And the, may not be served concurrently, so for instance, if someone was suspended for a game and they're out of school suspended, under the old, under the current code, let's see if I use the right language, under the current code, they would then have to come back and miss another event. Under this code, missing one game is missing one game, even if they are out of the school suspended. That is the recommendation, I believe, that came from this fall. So they would not have double, language of not having double jeopardy and missing games twice.
So if a student was suspended for some reason, let's use this hypothetically, on Tuesday, they had a sporting event on Tuesday, they're ineligible to play because that they were suspended from school. The code will now say that, that that is a one game, assuming that that suspension deserved a one-game suspension. The athlete would have served their one game. Under the current language is that they're suspended on Tuesday, they can't play on Tuesday because of the academic suspension. And then therefore, when they come back on Wednesday, Mr. Blaha gives that to the, the process, and for the code, would have to impose another game for, for the code violation. So the academic suspension can coincide with the co-curricular suspension. But if you're suspended on Wednesday, and there's no activities, Mr. Blaha's gonna give you due process on Thursday, most likely, and then that student athlete would miss the following game for the role. I'll say we've dealt with this in our district, this is an issue.
I want.
I, I, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, come here, no. If you're going, I need to come up with my words, but I don't agree with the direction I'm going towards. Unless if that's, if, if I kind of, if I'm Sam, it's kind of solves an appealsable, but.
No, not on this, the, the student athlete still has the right to appeal, that, that won't go away.
This creates due process, the proper procedure.
The other way that it goes. It was, it was, go ahead.
So, polling all our neighbor schools, the term most of them would use is the double jeopardy, or, or, or double punishing, right? Um, I could no longer find anyone that still had this language, most of them have removed in the last two years. So this removes that double jeopardy of, of serving it additionally, that's, that's.
I don't agree with lowering expectations. And with that, just because you are not allowed on school property because you are out of school suspended, I don't think that gives a free pass to play the next game. Because that double jeopardy situation exists because of the fact that I got, the first punishment was I can't be on school grounds. The second punishment is to miss the next game. I think that's the intention of it. And so I don't yet understand why.
Well, in Mr. Russ's example, um, they get suspended and they miss that game. So they are still, they're still missing a game, so they're not getting, they're not going to just get suspended and then be able to come back and play. They're going to miss an event. It's going to happen one way or another. It's just the way it currently is, they're going to miss that game, and then when they come back from suspension, they have to serve another missed game.
Depending on the. So depending on training, kids miss different marks or that's what I'm. If I, I'm a hundred percent.
May not be served concurrently, so they can't be served at the same time. So now they. Could be now, but now we're actually separating them. So before, a code violation student handbook couldn't be served at the same time as an athletic code one. Now they could, or now we're, we pull them apart. So we would not have that, if that's the recommendation, they would not serve, they could be served at the same time now. Before we said they couldn't be served at the same time. I'm, so the recommendation was to clarify that it was only a co-curricular code suspension and this code would not be dealing with handbook suspension or OSS. Hope I said that right.
Yeah, I think the student athlete is not in the code.
Correct.
Any other question? Uh, yeah, I did just, a quick question on page six, uh, did you run up to that? And I just, I, just more for clarification, so you said, this is just, this isn't something you had been following, you just didn't realize it was language in the handbook, correct?
Correct.
So we'd like to remove it.
We'd like to remove it, was not a past practice.
So you're, so you'll be following what you've always done?
Yeah, we've not, not, I've never known of us preventing the student from participating because they have a fine.
Thank you. Mr. Brins Gilbert, I make a motion to recommend to the full board approval of the. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Sanders.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, yeah, no. That's fine, if you want to pull up my slide, I'll admit, I just copied John's homework and put my name on it. But there is one significant thing that, uh, so, uh, for me, obviously updated, we have different offerings than the high school, um, but I just updated that to match the high school, um, for the eligibility code. Um, I heard, same thing with, uh, moving the, one you just questioned, that they just have a fine, they can, you know, to turn their old stuff in. So on page six, we are updating that when we move from marking periods to trimesters, we realize that there's a large time and our sport seasons are really six to seven weeks. And so what we're going to do is we'd like to, to look at trimester midterm grades. Uh, other schools do it like week by week, some do it every three weeks. I just think it's a natural time where teachers are notifying parents, this is your student's current grades. And if we have an athlete who's failing more than two classes, at that time, they'd be ineligible for the fifteen school. Which, I think, when I mapped it out, that would pretty much be the end of the season for most of those athletes. Uh, so it might be something I come back and want to change next year, but at the very least, I would like us to have the opportunity to look at those grades six times a year versus just three. Uh, same thing, we added discrimination, um, on the list of serious offenses, kind of coming, clarified that, uh, they could be served consecutively versus not concurrently. Uh, and then we had some stuff like it used to be print off the hard copy and so there's like two pages of signature stuff that we don't need anymore because it's all online. So if you agree with Mr. Blaha's stuff and you agree with, uh, the trimester midterms, we're good.
Thank you.
Motion for Mr. Sholley, say my Mr. McKenna, any further discussion? Mr. I like, I'm consent. I'm consent. Further discussion and all?
Is there, that, that, because I can't, I'm not a therapist, but we talk about that concurrently side of this. That only affects students that are out of school. Like, that would only affect students that are out of school suspended, right?
That is, in-school suspension could also.
Would in-school, is in-school suspension affect, but is in-school suspension way into that? Because I understand that you can't, if you're in-school suspended, you can't, I mean, sorry, if you're out of school suspended, you obviously can't, you can't. How is it in-school suspension?
Give me one second here, please. From my memory, uh, student can't be suspended in school or out of school and be eligible to participate in out of school activities. John's going to give you the exact words, but that's. There it is.
No, so, um, they could not practice, but that would not necessarily, they could be withheld from a game, but they're not required to, they're required to for an out of school suspension. So it would, it would depend on the circumstances and whether it rolls at that level, but it's not a required.
Is that what John gets on the board?
Doctor in his time.
But that doesn't include in-school suspension for.
So I did one more question. You mean, when I read that, they must be served concurrently, that means back to back, not at the same time? But we're saying that they, that by removing consecutively, they can be served at the same time? But they are, I mean.
Not considering.
By removing concurrently, we're saying they can be, even though that's what we're calling.
Kind of clarifying the language to say athletic code violation. Someone that's OSS, that is not an athletic code violation in how that suspension is served. So, an athletic code violation, a code conduct violation could be served consec, concurrently or at the same time. But we clarified in page ten there that we're only considering the athletic code violation.
Athletic code violation. Wants to be served back to back to back.
Yeah.
So that would mean that they would miss one of the whole innings.
Depends on the length of suspension, let's say they have a OSS and they're going to receive the minimum here for one game suspension. And as Mr. Sholsey said, it hap, I'm sorry.
Oh, in that sense, that's obviously.
An out of school suspension, I'm, they must miss one event.
That'd be it.
But, but, but it, it's not going to add an additional event if it happened to be that, that out of school suspended day is the event they're also missing a game.
I'm glad you just clarified, but that's who are.
It does too, yeah. It's still going to be, it's still going to be a code violation. Mr. Blaha is still going to interview that student, even if they missed that Tuesday game. He's still going to interview them, give them their due process, and then issue a other code violation for the game already served, which would be that Tuesday. But it's not, nope, you don't have a code violation, nope, there is a code violation. But Mr. Blaha can come back and go through the process and say, this student's been suspended three times, this is more than a one game suspension, now he's hit two games, one of them's already been served, he's got to sit out the next athletic.
How I see it, now those, that, that they're separate. So, and the WIAA disagree with that is, since they're separate, so if you are in school suspended or out of school suspended, that was, that, that, that's your punishment during the school day and that your punishment outside of the school day has to exceed beyond that. So, uh, just because those extra curriculums are extra, the standards are there. So even though we say things about double jeopardy and whatnot, your behaviors shouldn't, that, that means our student should have exceeded expectations on their games or they're not self-aware. That's just, that's just my take on it.
I, I see where you're coming from and I have, I can kind of agree with that because, um, you know, we're talking about behavior and how we're dealing with negative behaviors and everything that's happening. More, maybe, and may not be the best way to deal with these behaviors in the classroom or whatever. So I can understand where you're coming from. I, I think that's, like, if they, um, if they're doing something wrong in school, they need to serve that. And if they miss a game, they miss a game, and then I switch your thing, I mean, I do, but.
What I'm getting at, because the main reason why this is coming back to is not because, but the other reason why it was a problem wasn't because of line three, it was because of how line two was served and that there was a difference. I, I think the one and following, the suspensions must be served. Maybe I looked at the wrong one.
The highest level.
Highest, the highest level, yeah, that, that, the hi, the highest level. That was the one that should be looked at, make sure that it's looked at, that it's defined to com, so that there is no exceptions to this. That's the one I'm sure of, that's not, it's double jeopardy.
Mr. Kennedy, I'm going to respectfully call the question. Yeah, you can do that. I think, um, this will be a. You want me to say, can you hear that here?
No.
Not what they're calling.
Bernie got, Bernie got, Bernie got.
Yes.
Sorry, just calling the question.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's calling the question. And it could be all in favor.
Yeah, and I think, uh, just to wrap or share, what's that?
The question.
Sorry. Oh, okay, got it, sorry. No, you're good, I'll just, it's not waiting for you. Uh, okay, so all those in favor of present or, uh, recommending the full board the co-curricular handbooks as presented with the discrimination harassment update, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion moves forward to the full board.
Consent, okay. He wasn't.
Yeah.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Let's take a five minute break. Does that work for folks? Eight, careful, strip that.
There's a big one over there.
Too going to have anything exciting.
We are still filming, so, okay? We are still.
No exceptions. Well, it's hunting, I just told them, uh, trying to do one thing and affecting the others.
Yes, so what role is that?
Yes, yeah.
Which, which role is that?
I've been, uh, yeah. But yeah, that's, and that's.
All better? All right, let's get started, folks.
Go waiting.
I'm sure it's easier for them if everyone does that.
Like the ice cream guy, you should have a little sonny playing or something.
We don't have to offer, but.
The males on it?
Yeah.
Five men do, fruit snacks.
All directions.
Funny, excited about the fruit snacks.
I haven't, I haven't yet.
I had to stop it.
No longer than time goes.
Thanks so much. Everybody likes.
I never, I never did try. You start saying. Sam, like this is more.
You could have built a snack.
We're gonna have long ones like this, we gotta have snacks.
All right, should we just start him?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, hurry up.
All right, I appreciate an possible recommendation to approve policy revisions at twenty-two sixty-six. Uh, twenty-two sixty-six, a little background that goes into the next two. Recently, the new Title IX regulations came out from the federal government. That is considered the law effective August first. Because of that new changes, all of our trainings changed. Everything, not everything changed, but we have to go through a new process. Working with the Ola, they created an entire new policy, twenty-two sixty-four, which we'll get to in a little bit here. But twenty-two sixty-six is our current, I'm gonna call it a Title IX policy, which is the non-discrimination of basis of sex in educational program or activities. I'm gonna call them Title IX, just to not say those many words. So the new Title IX policy comes into effect August first, twenty twenty-four. Therefore, we need to end twenty-two sixty-six effective July first, twenty twenty-four. Because if, I'm sorry, July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Because if there's any complaints that would fall under Title IX prior to August, I'm sorry, prior to July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, we have to follow twenty-two sixty-six. So we cannot delete twenty-two sixty-six effective July or August first. We have to keep this on the books just in case someone comes and says, I, a situation that you're discriminating for harassment happened between basically twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-four. And that falls under the old regulations, which Ms. Mullen has also continued to be trained on that. So the policy revisions in twenty-two sixty-six is only on the top. There's two lines that says this policy is only in effect for situations that happened prior to July, prior to August first, twenty twenty-four. I don't believe so. The revisions are. That right there, that would. So, and I know that's all I have right now. Just hope as I know it wants to probably. Can you mention something earlier called table?
Questions and comments?
Yeah.
For, I mean, for, I have the motion to table this. To load the children's. So. I guess there is something to this that was mentioned, and that is the removal of this kind of statute, line four eight three zero two, which is the first degree sexual assault child from this statute. But from this, I'm not sure. And are we adding the. What about? Or potentially, I, and I don't know if those lack in terms of being. But I'm not sure. The other ones are moved has to do with health examinations.
Do you have more questions?
To me, that, I mean, that's an important question.
But it isn't out of. Yes, yes.
But this is still affecting.
Unless they have. I can handle. There might be a lot of those. They will be abolished, a lot of this is. Other questions? Comments? Just want to entertain a motion.
I'm moving recommend for the full board approval of policy revision to twenty-two sixty-six. No, no. I will second that.
Motion, Mr. McConnell, second from Mr. Schultz. Sorry, just point of clarification. So are we allowed to use the vibe that we're.
Yeah, I am, yes.
So we're not able to quit that understanding, understanding that, like, why?
Yep, and I'm gonna get that in a form. Thank you.
We know it has really important. There's a motion on the table that's been seconded. We're, we're, uh, twenty-two sixty-six. We're getting some clarification on the statutes that were removed. And then, yeah, so we're about to probably vote unless you have comments. Not, sorry, not on consent. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion moves to full board. All right. Three G.
I'm stressed.
Three G. So this is the Neola's new policy on the new Title IX regulations. So just some overviews on potential changes these going to affect. This is as of now, the law of the land, August first, twenty twenty-four. There has been some injunctions. Several states have got court injunctions from stopping this from moving on. Wisconsin is in the Seventh Circuit and Wisconsin is still on track to approve these changes. We've been, we, Ms. Mullen and I have been learning a lot about the new Title IX regulations. It's been a topic of basically every meeting we go to. And the feeling is, is that Wisconsin will not be one of those states because the Seventh Circuit, previous decisions reaffirmed some of this new language when it comes to Title IX. But it doesn't mean that Wisconsin will not have an injunction. However, we are moving forward as August first, the law of the land is coming forward. Tomorrow, Ms. Mullen and I are getting trained on Title IX compliance officer training through Randy Lewis, through Neola's people. So we need to have everyone training that's working with kids. And decision makers and investigators, appeal process, everything. Everyone needs to be trained prior to August first, if you're dealing with kids. So we're gonna have a plan in place for our co-curricular, for our coaches in August, before they start school. For any summer school offerings that continue on, band camp, show choir camp. So anyone that's working with kids, we're moving forward and planning accordingly to be compliant. So the new regulation explicitly state discrimination on the basis of sex based on sex stereotypes, sex characteristics, pregnancy-related condition, sexual orientation, or gender identity. So it expanded the definition of sex. Throughout. Updated definitions, complaints used to be, you know, in writing, they can do it orally now. But obviously, as we go through our training, love to get things in writing, but they can be taken orally. And we would write them down through the compliance process. The Title IX coordinator now can serve as investigator and decision maker. Before, it wasn't very clear. Now it's very clear that they can be decision. The appeal decision makers also needed, and that is in the draft, the superintendent. You may ask, well, why isn't the board the appeals? Because you all have to be trained in that process. And superintendents typically take that role, the boards stay out of it. And if they do not like the appeals decision, then they go to the OCR, EPI, and go through that process there. But the board is not involved with this process, Title IX. And that, as I stated earlier, training needs to be completed prior to working with students. And that training starts tomorrow. We also have other administrators who are interested in being Title IX compliance officer trained, which is fantastic. The new regulations state that one person has to be stated as. Past, we had two, we took out Mr. Ford because we didn't train him in time, which is perfectly fine, which is in regular, which is in line with the new regulations. What has happened in the past is, is that the schools that have had, or organizations that have had two, typically a male or a female one usually works with students, you know, in work with staff or adults. They have found that when they go in and investigate, you know, follow-ups, they talk to one compliance officer and they say, yep, I got it. They go to another compliance officer and the compliance officer says, I have no idea what you're doing. That's not me. So they're gonna have one compliance officer, they're saying one compliance officer that oversees all, all, all Title IX complaints. Now, Ms. Mullen, in our case, could say, you know what? Or she can delegate that to a different compliance officer if she wants. That's if she wants. Ms. Mullen can also say, Mr. Blaha, you're gonna be the investigator in this decision. Or in this process. So the compliance officer does not have to do all the work. They can delegate to who it is. But the new things are is that they can serve as an investigator, decision maker, which really helps in small business. So those are the biggest changes with the overview, without getting into the policy right now. But it did expand to gender identity. It is, it does give students who identify with a different gender access to the bathroom, bathroom, and locker rooms of their gender identity. And please know, we have internal processes to go through that step. We work with the family, we work with the students. Our facilities are set up, but we can't make tweaks to those facilities and everything like that. But we, we have facility, we believe, for any student who doesn't feel comfortable in any situation, in the locker room, bathroom, or restroom. So that's kind of an overview of, of the, to me, is the Title IX. I've also shared some other things with you, but that's. But it is the law of the land, and the law of the land has the law of this person. Part of Lisa and our, my information reading about this is that boards need to act. If we do not act, we open ourselves up to litigation in both state and federal. We're going against state and federal laws. The state, for instance, says we need to have a grievance procedure. We need to have a grievance procedure. For example, so there's additional state protections that we have to, that come into play. New is pregnancy and related conditions as well, as for students and staff making sure that they're taken care of as well. And again, I don't think it's a big change for us, but it really puts it into law. This is the biggest thing, is it is the law. And the rights are outlined. If anyone has a suspicion, and that's where the training of the staff comes in. If anyone has a suspicion of, of a Title IX violation, they're obligated to report it to the administration.
Informal resolution, that's new.
We have an informal resolution. Ironically, we have the process for informal resolution already in twenty-two sixty-six. That just outlines the process. Now, I believe, since they're still trying to figure out what that train, because you gotta be trained in informal resolution now, that it is not in the new one, the process, because I think they're still trying to work out what that internal process is for that based off the training. And that may be an administrative rule about how you work through that informal resolution process based on training. I'm still learning more.
Questions, comments, more?
Sorry.
We can get into the policy or we can, I know Ms. Lopez asked to table that as well. That's all I really have is more before diving into the policy. Oh, I would say. It's, you know, all boys have to act this way. All girls are expected to act this way, for example. All boys are expected to open the door orally.
Men is assertive, aggressive, sexually adventurous, emotionally restrained, women are desile, passive, modest.
You're a female, so you should act this way. You're a male, so you should act. You're a male, so you should act.
They can't action that on appearance or...
It's, you know, appearance is one thing, but once you act on someone's appearance, you shouldn't be dressing that way because you're a, a whole, that's sex stereotype, and that's, could be true as, um, or as.
I mean, have an example that would be the right approach to education, would be like maybe STEM. Well, that's, you know, science and math, that's, that's boys. And, you know, girls are more, you know, English, you know, that, that, so they can't discriminate based on, it's, it's, it's.
Would having that opinion be considered harassment? Like, if you express that opinion, like, I, I think that, I think that all boys should play with blocks, and all girls should evaluate.
So, if, if there's action, so, like, thinking about the, the definition within the policy, it has to be, um, you know, meet all the requirements of the policy, you know, objective, pervasive, et cetera, but also it has to, then, if it limits a person's access or participation. So, if somebody were repeatedly, repeatedly harassing someone to the point where then, say this female didn't feel like she could participate in that STEM class or something. So, I mean, I mean, so maybe.
Yeah, so expressing that opinion could be, um, um, um.
So, if, once again, it goes through the definition, and that's where Ms. Mullen and I are getting, Ms. Mullen specifically needed to be trained on those types of situations. And there's gonna be a lot of what-ifs. There's gonna be a lot of this, because it's now pervasive or severe. And Ms. Mullen may say, well, it's not severe, it was said at once, it's not pervasive, you know, and, you know, we told you to stop it. Now, repeatedly over time, now it's, could be more severe, first way, pervasive and stuff like that, but one comment, without being trained yet, I would say, no, that, that doesn't tell me that I can correct it.
And as pregnancy or relationships, um, where I'm getting to the policy right now, so I, I don't have that in front of me, um, area, but I, I believe that there are no, it's like no, um, no, doctors' notes, for example, are required. So, is there, um, any proof that there is pregnancy or any other conditions required? So, it could be anybody who's done with their pregnancy.
Or terminated pregnancy, or lost a pregnancy, or lost a baby, or anything like that.
Yep.
But there's no proof required that, uh, biological.
I don't believe so. Once again, those things come up, especially doing this, in this new era of the new regulations, we're calling, uh, and say, hey, this is a back pattern we have, how does this fit in
Um, so, speaking to, to last year, um, I mean, one major issue, where we had to go through the whole thing, and then another couple that, um, were able to be resolved, most systems, I don't say.
They all rose to the top, you know, we have an informal, and, or, we have, we have our, our administrators, who are also gonna be trained, you know, in, in these things, are gonna be asking a lot of questions to Lisa, and Lisa says, is, is this, if a middle school student does this on the playground or out of school, how does that do in athletics? So, there is a lot of, and that's where the training comes in, and me, and, meaning with the superintendents, scared, I don't wanna go into stereotype, but middle schoolers go after each other and may make some very poor choices after being told not to several times because it rises to the level, and that's where the training that Lisa and I have not had yet on that new information. So, it's really, but the middle schoolers are gonna be calling Ms. Mullen a lot and says, hey, does this lot rise to the level? Um, I know that some of our administrators also want to, because they wanna learn more of all of that process, but they still gotta call Lisa and say, hey, Lisa, this, I got this, I don't know if it rises to the level, but I need to check with you.
Mr. Ford and I were on the phone a lot, even in the school either, and just kinda having this conversation about what rises and...
Yep. Other comments, questions, more? I don't think anymore. Okay. So, I feel like we've done a pretty good job as a board for the last year and a half of, like, what the, uh, kind of topics. This is potentially, uh, it's law, or if it's gonna be law, I don't really have much of choice to pick up the subject on. Uh, I think there's numbers of a community, who look at it and say, there's, that, 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 et cetera. I also, as I read through it, there are parts, pieces that open the doors of things that are unstated, but they're kind of a spelt of other things up the road than, than, uh, Lisa's thought. I wasn't here when you made the table, workshop, or whatever. Uh, I, I provide this house and wood and stuff for the workshop, but, um, it's, it's a good, good, a little controversial house, and, yeah, this is charged with an argument. Uh, doesn't mean I like tables, and, 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 but I think, I think, uh, workshop can now, and, 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 and,[1294.13] here in these drafting notes, that it was their recommendation that it would be included. So, I think that in some respects, and may perhaps in an effort to protect or immune the district from anything, the most liberal Russian thing extended to be a policy possible. And I don't believe that they necessarily reflect our community. And I say that with all respect, care, love, compassion for every human being. I respect and honor that they can be of everything we need. So, I'm not pointing to some who say that, that, that they don't kind of, they don't, that they should not have protection under the law. But the judge from Kentucky states that the final rule, good among other things, well, okay, the Department of Education's interpretation of not Title IX, like gender identity on people living with, or in some instances arguably stronger-looking men, biological sex, would subvert Congress's vote of protecting biological women in education. And the final rule would, among other things, require schools to subordinate the fears, concerns, and privacy interests of biological women to the desires of transgender biological men to shower with and share restroom facilities, et cetera. It would require students to self-center and compel speech. There are a lot of issues in this policy that I feel need to be addressed. They deserve to know we need to attend here. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions from board? I think, I'll just say, I think it makes sense to, I can see the logic behind the workshop thing. I would just, I'm also worried about that timeline, too. If we delay a decision tonight, would you, you said you're all getting trained before a workshop would happen, right? Is that what I heard?
You said you're getting trained tomorrow in what it means to be a Title IX board. Not about investigations, not about decision-maker, not about a informal resolution, and not about a general staff member. That has not come out yet on the line side, so.
Mr. Russ, we could potentially move to approve this to the full board and still do a workshop.
Oh, absolutely.
That's where my husband's going.
Because I mean, I don't see any reason to not allow it to be forward if it is going to become law, but I do think it's really important to give our community an opportunity to have a choice. I don't know if it would be something where we do it right before the meeting or something like that.
Technically, we're looking for that part. You just recommend a workshop and then to include the final review and the further timeline.
And so not have a workshop?
No, have a workshop. We don't even have to, I wouldn't even recommend it. Have, because committees, I mean, we're doing it tonight is really because for history, it's not installed, it's not set by policy to do it.
But if we don't move it forward today, it would be a...
We've had, we've had one, we've had several items to say no recommendation from the committee, but to the full board. We've had that before.
So, I just say, we don't want to do this tonight, but that's what we want to do. But we all want to say, essentially, we can have a workshop, you know, and just not let...
We just have to be careful there's certain, you know, some people at the workshop may want to have be removed.
But that is a law.
That's, well, that's, and that goes back to, you know, whatever talking points of certain things, because even if it's not a policy, it's still a law we have to follow.
The other thought I had was, kind of pertaining to what John had said, allowing public input, but in a different way. At, you know, three minutes, some of the community members are probably going to need one of the three minutes. And again, having it not right before the agenda item. We've never done it before, but is there a way to integrate that, or is that really to get the change of policy? Almost all you can answer.
Well, I couldn't, it's a very important policy. You would have, if we do it at the meeting, the full meeting, you would have the authority. I believe, looking into it, I believe the committee chair or the board president has the authority to expand the board. And if we wanted to do public input, then this policy agreed away, we can, on the agenda, we can make sure that we put that up pretty often.
And I guess my thought is, for that agenda item, open it up to the community members, kind of some, like the annual meeting is what popped into my head, where people have an opportunity to talk, and then you let everybody else talk, give you back in line if you need to, specific to that agenda. Because I do like the open meeting idea of having it where the community is aware itself. The workshop feels, it feels closed because it's just those people. It's not because anybody could come, you know, so I mean, but I don't know. I kind of like the idea of opening it up during the meeting more so than a workshop prior to it. Not that I can't be open, but I can be open to workshop.
I'm screen recorded. Do not. But we would have to.
I like when I was just more of a people there, more people, so more people understand and appear more transparent. I just think this is the kind of topic where somebody says, I didn't even know what I did, and what was going on, and what was going on.
And when you're recording, having all of it in a regular board meeting, maybe a lot more transparent, than having a separate workshop. If you think about the workshops that we've had, typically it was two or three community members, and typically they're the same two or three. It's not, it's not like a big one. Certainly not like board meetings where there are many controversial issues.
Yeah, the thing about, the thing that I've said most times about what I enjoy most talking on the board, or what I appreciate most about it, is the collaboration that occurred. And a lot of that occurred, occurred in the workshop. Like, there are some times where we've made, we have collectively, the board members there, and the community members collectively, have been able to see some changes to the policy that turned it from, I'm not going to use both of this to, for example, when our previous policy added male and female to that definition of sex, I would not have voted for it had you not included male and female to that definition of sex. And that came out of the work, out of the workshop. So, that is that, instead, you're not at the microphone, you're not, there's no intimidation, it's just conversation. But I mean, again, we just, I think we need to go through, I mean, with a pretty fine two points, which we want to make. And I don't personally feel comfortable, I don't already to our meeting, spending another, you know, hour and a half of my questions on here, that might be answered, but I'm going to make it so we don't have a same conversation, but everything's a question that we're operating on. But I mean, we'll take your time. I'm trying to help with the public input. I mean, for people to communicate with the speakers or whatever, I think the workshop would be a little bit more, to take their hand.
The situation of what the board, what the board is, what the staff, so whatever. That's, that is essentially why I, the board, the board, the, 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 the workshop.
I think for me, I'm willing to approve the policy and move it forward, but with the understanding that we're not going to work on that.
So, if you have to, you have to change it.
Well, we can absolutely make those changes.
But then it's a different thing.
Well, I think you can recommend stuff, doesn't mean the board has to change it.
I don't think we do that. As you say, we could put down the agenda, or we could recommend something, the agenda can be done.
So, does that, so I would make a motion to recommend that policy two, 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 six, four is on the agenda. I did not make a motion.
I think you could move, if you wanted to make a motion, you could make a motion that this, that this, this, that twenty-two sixty-four, move forward to the full board without a recommendation. And then, we can make another motion to say, hey, I'm making a motion to approve a workshop on twenty-two sixty-four, and maybe a little bit more details. You want to have it right before the full board meeting, saying we can have it at six o'clock. Well, there is, well, we make it clear that the workshop starts at six, and the board meeting will start at six-thirty, just like anything else we do. It may be pushed back until, depending on how many people come. We have to say that, nope, we're starting at six with the workshop. Our workshops typically are, of course, policy ones are a little bit different, but the other ones are about ninety minutes. So, if we cap it at ninety or two hours, we're starting a regular board meeting, no labor than seven thirty, five o'clock, which is still an hour and a half before this.
But, but that, you know, but, but it's, it's, it's less, and, you know, the board committees take a lot longer. Or, we have a workshop on, go back to the date of the fifteenth, because we may need some, if, if the committee says, yeah, I'd like to do X, Y, and Z, we may be calling our attorneys and say, so, and that's the downside of, of going at the board meeting. But it's a regular scheduled board meeting, but I'm comfortable with whatever the board would like to do and having any review available on some of this.
I think I'd be favorable to that. I know, the reason not available, what I told her, that's okay. You don't have to cancel a vacation.
I'd also, rather, I, I think it also makes sense to have it separate from, like, pre-board meeting stuff, just because of that piece, but that, that it's an important topic to not have to decide thirty minutes later or whatever.
So, one thing that I would like to, we need everyone's help, is to make sure it's not this student versus that student group, this versus that. It's really about focusing on what are some pivotal points that are, what are some discussion points? It's not a what-up, it just, you know, I just don't want to start pinpointing students against students the best we can to say, hey, this student group shouldn't be doing, shouldn't have this right that the law says. The law is the law. So, it's really about making sure that we go in with the, the law in mind, with the policy in mind, with the recommendations that we brought forward, to say, oh, what are some pinch points, and what are some discussion points there? It's really about what, through discussion points. It's not debating whether the law is right or wrong. I don't want to get into that. That's where the legislator and the politicians come in. We're talking about the policy. And that makes me think of some of those August parent communications after the education coming, and trying to do some of that, too, because trying to get out in front of some of those things that they're going to do.
But, yeah, that's, that communication side. What time are you thinking on that workshop? Six, six o'clock, but six P M? On the fifteenth?
I would be supportive of having our attorney present at least by soon, because we are going in a certain direction, and it turns out that violates the law, and we wasted a lot of time.
I don't know if they can look at that ahead of time and say, hearing all the stuff you can't change, going into that workshop, too, would be helpful.
We'll be talking to some attorneys tomorrow. So, but I can, I can definitely, I, I thought of saying, how can we get them on speed dial basis of that night, saying, hey, is this, it's okay? And we might be able to do some pre-voting of, we're thinking of an attorney that we've worked with in the past on twenty-two sixty-six that works in the new appliance. What are the non-negotiables in this? They have the template, they go through them. What are the non-negotiables here? I can work that out.
So, Sam, what kind of motion would you like to see about moving the policy to the board meeting at the end of March?
No decision. It would be recommend to move this agenda item to the full board without any recommendations from the community.
I will make that motion. First, Mr. Sholley.
Second, Mr. Hendricks. That's, all those in, or, sorry, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Mr. Brad Gilbert, I also, you on the same page?
Yep.
Also entertain a motion to approve a board workshop with regards to policy two-two-six-four on July fifteenth at six P M. in the S H S line.
Okay, okay. So, motion for Mr. Sholley, second, Mr. McKenna, to host the board workshop on this policy twenty-two sixty-four, July fifteenth at six P M. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. Yeah, sorry. All opposed, say nay. Motion moves forward. See you all next week. Anything else on this? Mr. Russ?
You need some more information. I'm going to get some, some additional information. Was to send a bunch of information as well. I will share that with you guys as well, to receive the additional information that we receive. I'll continue.
All right. Ms. Mansky, three H, discussion and possible recommendation to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five student academic standards.
My goal is to be the fastest item on your agenda.
Slow it down.
Okay. So, basically, I would propose that we keep all the standards that we've already used, which are the Wisconsin state standards, they're aligned with our state assessments, and we've done all the G B C work on them. However, I would also support that we add the E L D standards. This is a new requirement from the state, and really what it is, is to support the learning, the language development of our English learners. So, I'm just going to go through these slides really quick. Basically, I, I really like this slide because it shows it's two sides of the same coin. The left would be those academic content standards, that would be the math standards, the social studies standards. And then on the right would be those E L Ds, English Language Development Standards. So, basically, how you accomplish language goals within that science classroom, within that math classroom, so that we're not just teaching math, but we're also incorporating the language development needs of our students at the same time. These are the big, big ideas that are within those E L D standards, equity, integration of content and language, collaboration, and that the, the development that we're working on is helping students to be able to function in our classrooms and out. All of the standards that start with one are that social and academic, or the social language, so how you're communicating, go to the bathroom, hi, good morning, all of that is that social language. Two is our language arts. Three is our math. Four is our science. Five is our social studies. Too much words. We really focus in on grade level bands within the E L D standards. So, this slide is an example from the kindergarten section, and basically they have the same slide in each grade level band, but you can see it, it breaks it down in that narrating. What are things that students at this level would be able to do with narrating, informing, explaining, and arguing? This is a fourth and fifth grade level band. It shows you that standard, so E L D, L A, language arts, four and five, so this would be then inform and interpretive language, and these are the, the skills that we would encourage kids to do within fourth and fifth grade. And then this is a high school example, showing, and again, all of these are all the different grade levels, showing discourse by level. So, E L levels are one, two, three, four, five, and then six, they would be fully exited from the E L program. So, it tells you within discourse where kids are in that language development, and, and what we would, how to scaffold the work that we're doing in our class to support the language level that students are at. So, really, it's helping our teachers to say, here's the content that I teach, and here's how I'm going to help you support your, your language development at the same time. So, this would be the actual document on our page with links to everything, and that bottom link is the new one for the English Language Development. Any questions? I know I went through that really quickly.
I think I have two questions. Are, will students be graded on that? Okay, that's not, so math classes are not required for grade students on that.
Correct. Correct.
And I get that answer from my question.
Okay.
Other question? Any further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion moves forward to the full board. Thank you, Ms. Mansky. Three, aye then. Discussion and possible recommendation to approve budget revisions from last school year.
All right, this is, will be the last budget revision that we get. These are just recommendations to the full board get. So, if you do have questions, hopefully you had an opportunity to look at the slides. Things came in much better once Ms. Howser and the team started bringing things in and that sort of thing. So, bottom line is, is that we're in the good of about twenty-eight thousand dollars. So, that's excellent. So, the audit is the final week of the twenty-second, so that's when everything comes in, and that's not later, all the final, final thing. So, I can go into this a little bit more, you know, revenue, didn't get as much as we want, reclassing things, E rate delayed, so we're now pushing that back over to the following year. Expenses, less than what we planned, which is always good. Actual costs came in and everything like that, but we did have some high usage for the substitutes, that's why we needed to add the thirty thousand dollars. One thing I want to talk about here is the W R S rate, raised it. They also raised their W R S rates for us as well by a half a percent, so that will be a budgetary increase as well for next year. For health and dental enrollments, at the beginning of the year, we say everyone's going to take family and start speculating, and now when they start coming in our final budgets, so that came out positive as well. You know, moved some things around with the building budgets, came in less, moved some things around with welding and the, you said that Montessori, if you haven't driven to the port on twenty-seventh, look to the Montessori playground, you will not miss a big red chip. So, there's, well, and the co-frequency budget came in a little bit less than what we talked about. More expenses for constructional services, closed-out purchase orders, Ms. Mansky was very nice and saved about fifty-five thousand dollars for us. So, well done there, but it's adjusted and everything like that. The grants started to come in, we need to ask for funding and that sort of thing. Student services, once again, those P O's, so we did a nice job there with Ms. Mall. If I'm going too fast, please let me know. Business services, a long list of there, but basically technology was less than what we needed to, closing purchase orders, that's the biggest thing when you start coming down, closing purchase orders. People have open P O's, if we tell them to keep them open, if they want to buy things just in case, and the need's just not there.
So, everything that says, did not use all purchase orders, that's, that's...
Yep. Yep. You know, the high school welding shop might have needed twenty thousand dollars in steel, while they only used fifteen. So, that five comes back and gets closed out. So, and the, those first will do a very nice job towards the end of the year. Do we need that five thousand dollars worth of steel?
No, I can, I'd like to have, but if Sammy Lewis has played out a little bit of enrollment final adjustment a little bit for you, then I will have to be, just that, we're talking about that.
Thank you.
Has she decided to us?
Yep.
I'll do, of course, yeah, she'll be at the meeting.
She'll be there, but I'll...
Great.
Same thing with the vouchers. We tried and planned for that, but we came in less. A little bit more expenses, ours came up a little bit, the legal side of things is starting to creep up. So, our fund balance, this is where the good news is. We thought originally we came into this, into this meeting thinking about a hundred and fifty-two, the adjustments in, under a hundred eighty's are the good, and we've made a change in fund balance of twenty-eight thousand dollars. So, that means we still have the five hundred seventy-five thousand dollars in revenue stabilization still sitting there, which is fantastic. This is pretty close to his balance question, you're going to give him the forty-five, twenty-five thousand dollars. And I mean, all the others here, this one's about this how we have. So, our debt service fund, this is how we pay for everything. We did get some interest income there, we're doing very well there with interest income. Fund forty-six, we have about four hundred and... Fund forty-six, we have about four hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, or you know, roughly four seventy-two in fund forty-six yet. And that's, everything's paid for and everything like that out of the auditorium already. Fund forty-nine is the Herman referendum budget. We have about thirty-nine thousand, three hundred thirty-nine thousand in that activity. When we get to the retention pond, that I think it's about three, three hundred eleven thousand. So we're sitting pretty good there. We did get those new line ports out of that one as well. And looking at retention pond in about ten minutes. Currently, I'll have to confirm that. We had a, I believe it's four twenty-one right now, but we had to do the new line ports. So that's where it's down to about three eleven now. Nutrition services, we talked about that earlier, about a hundred sixty-two thousand dollar deficit. Community service, all they win is their revenue. Seventy-five dollars for.
For the.
For the summer win. That's only, that's for the two, three weeks, so seventy-five, it's still very affordable. We don't, we don't charge grab for school. Expenses are our normal win, parenting place, open gym, and co-curriculars. We do plan on giving a report, a win report, in July, well, at the end of the month. Questions?
There is a fund balance, say, we live fund balance.
There's, it's over, it's about, it's over five hundred thousand dollars right now. So this will be taken out and our leftover fund balance will be about three sixty.
There's a lot of words for fund balance.
One of their things, I know, you know, the subs are there. The nutrition service team, they have a lot of subs. We're perfectly fine, but those are all unexpected. Any, any questions? Take a, a recommendation to approve the budget revisions as presented, and this will go to the full board.
Motion by Mr. Flitz and Mr. Wells. I believe we need a roll call on this.
Yep.
Ms. Markford, please. Sorry, any more discussion, questions, good news? Thank you.
Very good news, Leah's team did a very nice job. Very nice job.
Have you ready, Ms. Markford?
Mr. Love?
Yes.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Shulz?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Mr. Philbert?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
It's Russ, fund balance. Just a, a free definition of what, this is what fund balance is. Assets plus liability, give it your fund balance. Not a cash account, it's just money, really our financial stability and our financial health. These are the five designations that have to be required by board action. Non-despense, or restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. So the unassigned is, you can see that a little bit with the revenue stabilization. Our policy is eighteen percent. When we're above that, we're above twenty-two percent the time for communication. And this is the, what we're looking at doing. Prepay expense at common school. We talked about the property insurance protectables already, about having that being assigned for that just in case. And then the unassigned, as we've been talking about through the referendum process, the operating referendum, designating one point one million in revenue stabilization.
So that's, that's. Can you say that one more time, sorry. The revenue stabilization.
The revenue stabilizations. We've already, we've already assigned five hundred thou, five seventy-five. And now we would like to designate revenue stabilization, one point one million. Yes.
And you, you designate a certain portion, it remains, that designation combined with your budget here. Are we talking about just reclassifying on our, on the fund balance?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And right now, if you're, this all goes, we have about ten point five million dollars right now. They're just sitting there until the board says this is what it's gonna be used for. And all the other funds. And this is where fund forty-nine to three eleven comes in, and it's the Herman, that's the Herman referendum, that's what we talked about. And they have designated two ninety-eight for fund fifty. Those are all the leftover things that. So the recommendation would be designate one point one, unassigned fund balance for revenue stabilization, and then recommending all other funds as presented.
So I, just a quick question. So it said unassigned, but is it an assigned revenue stabilization?
It's unassigned, but that's part of the definition of unassigned, meaning all funds. That's all the things that would be. Cash flow, contingencies, emergencies, that's all.
Alright. Thank you.
But this is for, hey, it's a stopgap. We know we're gonna use it to pay.
So we got one point one that we designate this time around. Plus the five percent, seventy-six from the previous year. So then is that one point six or seven or whatever it is, built into our budget for next year?
Just like the five seventy-five was built in this year.
Much luck that we didn't have to use.
Correct.
Because if we do end up having to use it, then that's an additional one point seven million dollar hole in our budget for the following year. Because unless we continue to pull that money out of the.
Yep. And our plan for twenty-five, twenty-six is to do something very similar to get to that eighteen percent, another one point one million. It's a scary situation following here, but. And that's where, that's why we're planning on a referendum, right, April of twenty seventeen. Because we're, by policy, we're not recommending. Be patient. That's the next agenda item. For the twenty-eight. Forty-six, so, but the recommendation, we did that already for the, for the twenty-eight thousand, that was up here. We did that in the budget revision, because if we don't designate, it goes automatically in the fund balance. So it's automatic. Any more questions, Congress? Yes. Yes. Yep. Hopefully, you know, we're probably gonna have to use the one point one. Hope, you know, but hopefully they're not the five seventy-five, or a portion of that five seventy-five. Yep. I believe you can pull it out of the sign with another action.
Mr. Frank Gilbert, I move to recommend to the full board designating one point one million of the fund, that's an assigned fund balance to be used for revenue stabilization. Motion by Mr. Shulz. Second that. Second from Mr. Wells. Any further discussion? Right, so we will need a roll call to vote on that.
Mr. Shulz?
Yes.
Mr. Wells? Mr. Barron?
Yep.
Mr. Philbert?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Sir, do you need another recommendation?
Oh, did you do the, oh, I did, yes. You've got one?
I would move to recommend approval to the full board designating all other funds, fund thirty-nine, forty-six, forty-nine, fifty, and fund eighty, fund balance as presented. Motion by Mr. Shulz, second by Mr. McKenna. Further discussion, questions, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Shulz?
Yes.
Mr. Barron?
Yes.
Mr. Philbert?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Free game? So, fund forty-six, I mentioned we had a little bit higher. I apologize, this is the current balance that Leah has in fund forty-six, is about three hundred thirty-one thousand. It includes interest, available long-range planning. However, the board has to take action on this. So administration just can't say, a boiler went down, we're gonna take that fund out of fund forty-six. We can take it out of the revenue stabilization, but we can't take it out of fund forty-six. So we have to come to you guys and say that. So this is all board action. However, due to our lack of funds, we're not, we're not recommending the contribution of fund forty-six. And because of that, no motion. We don't think more than that.
Any questions on that? It was four A, now that's an information.
Yeah. Summer school started, a good start, a lot of excitement. The summer feeding program, which Rob talks about, it's gonna go down in the parks now because a lot of the kids are going to summer school and they're getting bed right there. A lot of good positivity, a lot of teachers starting to come in and get to their classrooms and that sort of thing. Ryan and his team for building his grounds is working diligently, preparing for our transition days on the twenty-seventh to the twenty-ninth. We have in-service coming up. It's a busy time to get everything all working. So we do have the board workshop now, on the fifteenth, and right here at six o'clock. And then we have the full board on the twenty-second, and it's here. And then in August, we're back in. August nineteenth is our kickoff for our staff, welcome. It starts at seven thirty. If you are interested in coming, please let us know, and if there's enough, you are with us. But it's very brief, except we'll be done by nine o'clock. Three, about nineteen, nineteen. Cyber attacks are real. Yeah, but nineteen, that's seven thirty. Everybody's.
Alright. Entertaining motion to adjourn? Is there a name or you'll make one?
I'll make it.
Sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
I'm used to saying adjourn.
Did not get in there, but that, I mean, that started out. Public meeting order, meaning as the notice by other press media groups, we see them in radio, magazine, or across fifteen sports involved, part of the library, is there any changes to the agenda?
No.
I request a motion to adopt these, so. Motion by Mr. Shulz, second by Mr. Wells.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. We have any public input?
I do not believe so.
This is a discussion and possible action to approve the leasing of the welding shop. As far as high schools, we occupy and use by train, U.S. Inc., for welding trains.
And a lot of going back and forth with lawyers and such like that. We're very pleased to have this partnership, starting tomorrow if the board approves. They will be using welding shop. The only change in what you guys have seen before is the list of policies that we listed, visitor policies, facilities, and that sort of thing. We gotta work out some logistics with, you know, content and that sort of thing. But it's used during the school day, or during the work day for our custodians. Mr. Shaw is the teacher on record, so. All we're doing is giving them the space and then charging them for, for the gas that they use and electricity per day. Other than, they're buying steel, they're supplying the instructor, they're doing all the safety equipment, safety checks and everything. This can be terminated at any time by either party. And we do have things for future, and we don't think they come back here most likely after the three years. We still wouldn't have to necessarily, it must be automatic.
And that's your question to board members. So we cannot approve, move to approve the leasing of welding shop. As far as high schools, we occupy and use by train, U.S. Inc., for welding trains. Motion by Mr. Shulz, second by Mr. Wells, you all, all vote please.
Mr. Philbert?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Shulz?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Barron?
Yes.
Mr. Philbert? Mr. Rins Gilbert?
Do you, yes?
Yes. Sorry. We're sorry. This is the discussion of possible action, and I have a fence around the retention pond that's a little dangerous, so. So, a lot of guidance around our insurance companies with retention ponds, for some reason, retention ponds are beginning a lot of, a lot of attention by kids, wanting people swimming. Especially with the heavy rains that we've had, they look like fun ponds, and if they're not fun ponds, they're retention ponds, they're not swimming pools. So, we've actually had kids that go swimming before they come to school. They were not intended to have water, however, they, they're just, you know, they were just in case ponds, but they're doing it there, so. For a lot of safety, here is the aerial of what we would be looking at, and we do have several retention ponds. So we still have double spring doors to be able to get in there and mow them, but really looking at securing the, the, you know, they can jump the fence, they can jump the fence anywhere, but at least put doing our due diligence, putting up signs, and keeping the kids out of, and everyone else out of the pond. This is all on, Forty-nine, yep, out of Herman Referendum. But it's a lot. This side, you know, only one or four inches. I know this, this is rest, I hope you can use the other side, because some of it comes out of. Yeah, now, about Herman's, we have three quotes. S H S in their southwest corner, for many years, the snow just gets piled up there, and it's, it needs to be reworked. So, in the workout of Herman, we're recommending on the River Valley Fence, and that all work would come on Fund Forty-nine, and then the remaining seventeen hundred would come on Fund Ten, just to make that. We're getting a good deal, obviously, if you do think stand along, they'll probably be able to message us, and we're sure on that. Taking it here, hopefully, we're, we did not, committee, in hope of getting this in before school starts, the best we can is getting that one. So our recommendation is to have the River Valley Fence Company do the project.
You recommend the entertaining motion? Move to approve the fence as presented. Motion, Mr. Rins Gilbert, second, Mr. Hendricks, roll call please. In River Valley Fence.
Okay, don't ask my name, that's a present.
Your recommendation.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Barron? Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez? Mr. Rins Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Passes seven oh, as we see, discussion of possible action to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five student accident insurance.
Alright, this is a voluntary thing that our district done, has done for many years, there's not a lot of districts that do this. But we do offer supplement, free supplementary insurance for student accidents that happen on our property, at school vests, playground incident, a aquatic situation, or anything like that. They do cover deductibles and everything like that, too, are reimbursed to that with a maximum amount of, all students are automatically included. A lot of other districts say, this is voluntary, if you want to take it, it's, it's expensive or supplemental. This is the past history, so it's about thirty thousand dollars, depending on the year, we're pretty close to taking in, well, data, historical data. We've always used first agency, they are a broker, they go out to us, they go out and get the best rates, and the best rates, there's no change in benefits, with a total cost of about thirty-five thousand, so it is a slight increase from the year before. Another thing that we're looking for into, and we just got an appointment with, is, I know we talked about this table, having student EAPs. So basically, a student achievement program for mental health support, SCL support, how to deal with a fellow student, how to deal with a certain situation, how to deal with stress, that's something that we're also looking into, that's the potential, that we could offer to all students as well. But, this is, if the board wishes to continue with the first agency, this would be our recommendation.
Mr. President, to work on it. I move to approve the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five student accident insurance as presented. Should I ask, Mr. Russ, can you explain that last part again? If we don't do first agency, you would want to offer that to students?
We're looking to do it one way or another.
Okay, that's not.
Nope, nope, not, you know, if the board wished, I know that the motion was made in this thing, but with the allegation of fund and that sort of thing, but this is a, a benefit that we've offered our kids and our families for a long time. Nope. Well, it's basically, you're, you would have a primary insurance, and then take care of it. When you have negligence, that's different.
After a year from now, when we have to look at this again, and we're always thinking budget, could we see a report about how the payouts were distributed, was it five different incidents that ate up to thirty thousand dollars, or whatever? How many people benefited from that? I can give that information. It's a, it's a nice benefit, but, but, it's another thirty-five thousand dollars that we don't, and not obligated.
Agreed?
Agreed. It's a nice to have.
But all families get regardless.
We have a motion for Mr. Schultz, second, from Mr. Wells, and further discussion. Roll call please, ladies.
Mr. Rins Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez? Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
We can entertain a motion for this.
One more, yeah. One more recommendation.
Discussion possible action to approve employee recommendations.
Just a few for your. Yep. So, just a few resignations specifically, Gary Thompson.
Can you explain a pending resignation?
So, if a staff member resigns after July first, per their agreement or handbook, they have to pay liquidated damages, as it's called, so they're breaking their contract. If you break your contract after, between July one and July thirty-first, it's five hundred dollars, if you break it between August first and the thirty-first, it's a thousand, and then the tax rate's like that.
So long as Gary works, correct?
I think nine years.
Closer job to home.
Closer job. Very excited. They did, she originally did a transfer, I heard Andrew Nicholson, so his positions, did a voluntary transfer, so Andrew was going to be the head, and Gary was going to be the assistant, but an opportunity came on better hometown.
Mr. McKenna, I move to approve the employer recommendations as presented. Second. Motion for Mr. Schultz, second, for Mr. Wells, roll call please. You can, oh, sorry, we take. I don't think it's precedent setting, but in honor of nine years of service, I, I would recommend that we waive the liquidated damages.
Our handbook says it has to be requested. Does the wind transits in the.
Alright, we can go back, I do have a special. Roll call for motion.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez? Mr. Barron?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Rins Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Good question before we do the next one, can, something like that be put under the general? We're going to discuss it, or is that? They, they, can the, oh, sorry, we can talk afterwards.
Yep, they were.
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor?